It's like a call in Laverne City Council meeting to order, but I'll please rise together and join our pledge of allegiance. Ready? Begin.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilmember Carter, here.
Councilmember Davis, here.
Councilmember Hettford, here.
Mayor Pearl Templeson, here.
And Mayor Kendrick, here.
Periodically, we have the honor of pinning badges on new police officers and firefighters and promotions. And tonight, we have the honor of pinning a badge on a promotion that we would have liked to have done before, but due to some circumstances, wasn't able to do it. But tonight, we are. So I would like to bring up Fire Captain Andy Glaze. Andy was born and raised in Redlands. I don't think you've ever left, Ted.
No.
He currently lives there with his wife Lauren.
I'm gonna get you a mic.
Rescue 183.
It's making quick.
I'll turn it down.
We have an at-home audience, so they like to get in on these too. So we'll start over. Andy was born and raised in Redlands, currently lives there with his wife Lauren, with their three children Hayden, Marley, and Peyton. Graduated with a bachelor's degree in business management from Skidmore College. He worked at San Bernardino County Fire as a paramedic firefighter before coming to Laverne as the same. Is currently the Laverne Firefighters Association President. And Andy is currently assigned to Fire Station One on a sea shift. And if, a couple things. One, we're gonna ask his wife to come up and put the badge on. And then we'd like to have you tell us a little bit about yourself, so everybody can hear.
Rescue 121, 8187.
Is there a paramedic in the house?
Thank you very much. I just wanna thank my family for being here. Do a little introduction. I have my mom Sally, and obviously, you've just met my wife Lauren. Her dad Joey. Peyton is the little teeny one. Angie, Lauren's mom. Marley, the bigger one. My son unfortunately is really sick, and he would get you guys all sick, so. He couldn't make it, but he's gonna watch it on video. And then, my best friend Ryan, who is also a president of the Police Association in Redlands. So a good man to know if you live in Redlands, like I do. Beyond that, I mean, that was a good summary of who I am, because I wrote it. So the mayor did a good job of reading it. And, you know, I'm happy to be here tonight. Thank you guys for honoring me, and I'll keep working hard for Laverne.
Our next award is the Mike Shaw Pride of Laverne Award. This was typically given out at the Christmas luncheon, but the recipient was not able to attend, so we're doing it here. Each year in December, an employee with the Fire Department is recognized with the Mike Shaw Department of Laverne Award for Excellence in Exemplary Service to the Organization and to the Community. Employees' name will be engraved on a perpetual plaque and will be displayed prominently in the city facility. And with that award, I would like to please bring up our fire chief.
Battalion Chief Kevin, Greenway, please. I asked Kevin who nominated him for the Mike Shaw Award. He said, "I have no idea." So it is outstanding to be able to sit up here and represent, or stand up here and represent Kevin and the Laverne Fire Department, and talk about the Mike Shaw Award, but more importantly, talk about Kevin. I've only been here a few weeks, but I can tell you there's a few individuals in the department, many individuals, but a few that have really stepped out and made me feel welcome, and tried to make me feel like part of the big family. And Kevin's definitely one of those guys. There's no doubt that it could have been any one of the members of the Fire Department that nominated Kevin. Regardless of who it was, it was well-deserved, and I appreciate the support I've got from Kevin. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. At this time, we're gonna get a report from Terry Muse from Waste Management. Terry?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and community. I'm very excited to give you a recap of all that happened in 2019 in Laverne. First of all, 10,634 tons of material was diverted in the landfill. That's how much Laverne residents and businesses were recycled in 2019. Majority of that was green waste, and we know that makes sense. There's lots of big yards, nice green belts in Waste Management and Waste Management of Laverne. 5,893 tons were diverted from the waste stream. Next to that was paper, cardboard, glass, and metal. Also, there was 231 tons of construction demolition materials that were diverted from the waste stream and recycled. 82 tons of bulky items, couches, furniture, all those lovely things we put out for bulky items. Because 82 tons were picked up in 2019. And also, 8 tons of E-Waves, so that's computer monitors, televisions, those types of things were picked up. In case you don't know that we pick them up, we do. You can also schedule that for bulky item. And 35 tons of appliances, refrigerators, stoves, so on. So a lot of people got new appliances in 2019. Also, we collected a ton of batteries, which maybe doesn't sound a lot, but things of batteries are a lot. There's a kiosk outside here in City Hall. There's one at the senior center where residents can bring their batteries to be recycled, and so a ton was collected, and we really appreciate that, because that's one of the major causes we have for truck fires. When batteries are placed in either trash or recycling, they come in contact with metal and other things, and ignite once it's inside the truck, and then they have a truck fire. So we've actually had one of those in Laverne a couple years ago, so we're glad that people are diverting it from the waste stream. Also, I don't know if everybody is aware, there are two laws that have been enacted by the state of California that affect mainly businesses and multi-family properties. And one of them is requiring businesses and multi-family properties to do a regular recycling program, which is what you all do at home. But also, there's a new program that came into effect a couple years ago, which requires them to recycle organic waste and green waste. That's a big change for businesses, and it's been a real challenge to get them on board, because it means they have to change the way they do things, separate container, you know, it's just a change of behavior. But it was really exciting, because we actually jumped from 10 to 55 businesses in 2019 that signed on to do an organic recycling program. So that was a really positive thing that happened. Took a lot of education, a lot of going back to the businesses, and talking with the employees, and giving them posters, and going back several times, but it's working. And also, a great builder elementary started an organics recycling program. And you know, those kids, they did a great job. They really do, and they were so excited about doing this. And of course, that's what we have to start, because they're the ones that go home and tell their parents, and get them, you know, involved, because coming in 2022, residents are gonna have to recycle organic food waste. So it's gonna be not just businesses, but also residents, so we're all gonna have a huge pain. And this is not just Laverne, it's all of California, so it's not gonna, you know, be a shock to anybody once it comes. The goal of that is, because the state wants to divert 75% of the organic waste from the waste stream, because it creates methane gas, which is one of the most potent short-term pollutants, and that causes, contributes to climate change. But also, because in California, one in five children go to bed hungry. So the state really wants to encourage businesses to be able to donate edible food to food recovery programs. And that's one of the things that we're gonna work with the city on, identifying local agencies that will take the food. Because the best thing is to not be in the waste stream to begin with. So that's, and of course, not to buy so much, and for, you know, we all can reduce what we buy in terms of food. We all buy too much. It also is gonna affect the city, in that the city is gonna be required to pass ordinances to enforce these laws, which is something that's new. The state hasn't asked that yet, but, you know, asking that with this new law. And also, cities have to procure recycled products, and they also have to use natural burning gas vehicles. So it's a big change for everybody. It's gonna be a challenge, because also, on top of the laws, everyone's heard that there's a challenge in the recycling industry, that China was not accepting contaminated recyclables. It's caused, you know, a lot of changes, because most of our recyclables were going there. I'm proud to say that Waste Management does not send any plastics to China. They all go to manufacturers within the United States. However, they still have the same strict laws regarding, requirements regarding contamination. It's a big problem, people putting trash in the recycle bin or non-recyclable materials. So that's still, you know, gonna take a lot of education, a lot of work, trying to get that. To be able to, you know, the laws are getting stricter, and the commodity values and the fiscal are going down, the processing is going up. It's kind of a perfect storm, but we'll get through it, working together. I know we'll get through it. Also, I just wanted to highlight some of the things that we've done in community. It's one of the things that we really enjoy most, you know, here every week, picking up your trash, but we love to participate in community activities. And we have participated in, for example, we had our trucks in the Fourth of July Parade. That was so much fun, to be able to drive down the street, and it was so, so nice, because people were going, "Yay, thank you for picking up my trash," or "my couch," or, you know, it was just really kind of neat to have to cheer up the community, respond like that. Also, we participated in a community yard sale, because that's a great way of diverting things from the trash, because you can reuse it, and those things that are not solely yards, they'll go to nonprofit thrift stores. So we participate in that to help them to get that diverted from the waste stream. We also love the Sip of Laverne, participate in that, Taste of Laverne, Laverne on Tap. The Teacher of the Year program is continually sponsored for many years, and will continue to do that. And also, we're really proud that we're the sole sponsor for the Laverne San Diego Education Foundation Perseverance Awards, which are really, really just amazing awards, because it honors kids that are overcoming challenges to continue their education. So we're really proud to do that. And finally, I just want to let everybody know that we will be doing public tours of our recycling facility on April 22nd, which is a Wednesday, and Saturday, April 25th, in honor of Earth Day. So if you have not gone on a tour, I really encourage you to come, because anybody that comes on the tour, they understand much more clearly why it's so important to keep trash out of recycling bins, and why things aren't recyclable. And it's just good to know, once you put in that recycle cart, what happens to it? Take a chance to come learn about that. So we'll be taking reservations for that. You have to be 18 or older to come, for safety reasons. If you have a group of kids, we have another type of a thing we can do for them. Let me know, and we'll also arrange that. That's the conclusion of our report.
Any questions of Terry?
Just to comment, Terry, thank you for all you do for our community, and it's made a big difference. And it's nice to see Waste Management's role and the benefits, especially for teachers and here. They are so proud to have us, and we get to honor our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. There's also other participation, and Terry was talking about a lot of the things that were going on in our schools, and recycling, and so forth. That doesn't happen without a real, true partnership with the city. So I know our city staff is, sits alongside in creating these programs, and helping our community the best we can be in recycling, including things where they should be. So thank you very much, Terry, and Tracy, thank you very much for your participation with our staff, so thank you. I think the firefighters are out, so if they get called, I think they won't interrupt our meeting. We will move to item five, and that is announcement. We have a blue card for this item. Krista Chapman. Krista? Okay, now is time set aside for announcements. Is there anybody that would like to announce any events that are coming up in our community?
I'm Hugh Kelly with LB3C. I just wanted to remind everybody that we're having a council member debate, or whatever you should call it, on January 27th, next Monday night, at St. John's Episcopal. At 7 o'clock, the doors will open at 6:30, and we invite everybody. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to make an announcement? Okay, we'll move on to item six. That's consent calendar. Is there a motion? Vote, please. We'll move to item seven. That is Hillcrest Development on Hawthorne Avenue. And Candace will be giving the report. There are two of us that do have a conflict.
As being on the Board of Directors for Hillcrest for a number of years, and also working with the Hawthorne property, I'm gonna recuse myself.
And I also have to recuse myself. Five and a half years ago, I helped Hillcrest get the last remaining property, and was paid a small commission for that, but because I received money for that, I'm gonna recuse myself. But the nice thing is, because of that effort, we get a project, so good luck. Be gone.
Good evening, councilmembers. This proposed project by Hillcrest Homes includes construction of 14 detached and detached senior homes on about 1.7 acres. This project requires an update to the development standard with Neighborhood 6 of the Hillcrest Master Plan, zone change, parcel merger, precise plan review, street vacation, and a general plan amendment to the facility, to the proposed development. A little bit of the background about Hillcrest. It began in 1947, when Laverne residents partnered with the Church of the Brethren to create a retirement home community. Over the years, Hillcrest has slowly evolved, growing to accommodate healthcare needs for the rising population. The property now spans more than 50 acres and has undergone numerous upgrades. In 1992, Hillcrest requested approval of the master plan application, which divided the community into 23 different neighborhoods. The property I'll be talking about tonight is located in Neighborhood 6, which is located on the southwestern part of the Hillcrest campus, and is one of the last Hillcrest neighborhoods to be developed. In 2006, Hillcrest applied for a precise plan application to develop Neighborhood 6. The proposal included 10 new homes. It was a project to, it was a project that was found to be consistent with the current zoning and general plan designations, and therefore was exempt from CECL. In 2007, the economic recession and housing crisis left Hillcrest unable to complete construction of Neighborhood 6, and left the site unfinished. So this shows, this map shows the entire Hillcrest community, and shows the different types of housing, meeting house, aquatic center, dining room, community gathering places. And then the yellow area shows the proposed project area. So today, the site remains mostly vacant, with one single-family residential dwelling unit, which you can see on the west side here. This unit will be demolished when construction for Neighborhood 6 begins. There are six different cases that need to be approved with this project. Case 2419 was conditionally approved by the Development Review Committee, and was for, which was for the site plan and the overall design of the homes. Case 2519 parcel map is for the, I'm sorry, parcel merger, with merging the three lots together as one. Also, that was conditionally approved by the Development Review Committee. Case 2619 MPA is for the master plan amendment. 2719 VC is for the zone change. 90-19 VAC is for the alley vacation. And 88-19 GPA is for the proposed general plan amendment. All of which I will explain in a little bit more detail, but all of these were recommended to be approved by council from the Planning Commission. So the reason there are so many additional case files and requests from the first time that Hillcrest received approval from the Development Review Committee to develop this site, is because before, there was only, they were only building one of the properties, and that site was consistent with zoning, general plan, and master plan, and that can be seen here. That was what was previously approved. Now they're taking the entire site. So this is the proposed site plan. Now you know a little bit of the background, if you talk about the proposed project. It's bound by an alley to the north, Park Avenue on the east, Hawthorne to the south, and Magnolia to the west. The proposed 14 homes will continue the residential pattern of the Hillcrest community, and be oriented around an unvated central courtyard that will serve as a vital gathering place for all Hillcrest residents, as well as the surrounding community. In addition to the residential units, upon request from the Public Works Department, the applicant will widen the Hawthorne Street Avenue by two feet into the limits of the city right away to the north. Furthermore, the alley fronting the northern boundary of the project site will be vacated by the city, assuming the city council approves that. Ballers will be installed on each side of the walkway that will provide pedestrian connectivity between the project's central courtyard and an existing community garden to the north of the site. The overhead lines will also be placed underground on Magnolia Avenue. The 14 residential units will be situated around the site with a fully landscaped common area through the center, a meandering walkway with various trees connecting Neighborhood 6 with the adjacent property to the north. Each resident will consist of two bedrooms, residents will consist of two bedrooms, two bathrooms, and a two-car garage. The buildings along Magnolia and Hawthorne and Park will have a minimum of 20-foot driveway in length, and all of the units will be a single-story. There are 128 buildings proposed. Six buildings are two units sharing one wall, and the other two buildings are independent detached homes. There are different models ranging in size from 1,181 square feet to about 1,500 square feet, and each unit has a small enclosed patio. A tree analysis was also conducted by a certified arborist that concluded there were 22 trees located on the project site, none of which were protected by the city codes, except for the Theodore Cedar, which is located on the southeast portion of the project site, and that will be preserved in place and protected, and mitigation measures are there to make sure that that is protected. So all proposed residential dwelling units will have two-car garage, like I said, and a driveway. However, only the residents facing Park, Hawthorne, and Magnolia, so nine of the units, will have enough space to park two vehicles in their driveway. A total of three additional guest spaces will be provided. The municipal code requires two garage spaces per unit, plus one guest space per two units for retirement housing. However, it also states the Planning Commission may reduce this parking requirement to not less than .75 spaces per unit, plus one guest space per every five units. When the facility offers a separate transportation system, tenant automobiles are limited to the number of parking spaces provided. Therefore, the Planning Commission determined that these conditions substantially reduce the need for onsite parking. Therefore, there is not, they determine there's no need for one guest space per unit, and reduce the requirement to one for every five minutes, only requiring the three proposed guest parking spaces. So there are many different elevations, as they wanted to have options for their potential fires. Each home is different, craftsmen's style, including stone, wood siding, exposed rafter tails, all painted with earth tones, greens, blues, browns, with a total of really six different plans. I'm going fast. Do you have copies of them? The general plan currently designates most of Hillcrest as community facility. The applicant is proposing to amend the general plan map to redesignate the two parcels to the east as community facility as well, from low-density residential, to be consistent with the rest of the Hillcrest community. The proposed project is consistent with the applicable limitation measures listed in the land use element and the general plan. So basically, the existing has the yellow as low-density, and the proposed, everything will be community facility. Currently, the project site is divided into three different parcels, and is split into two different zones. The zoning designation for the two parties on the west is PR 4.5D, which is the yellow-ish shade. And the zoning designation for the parcel on the east is institutional, which is the blue. The parcels will be merged into one parcel with the zone change request. The final zoning designation for the entire project would be institutional, which is consistent with Hillcrest community. So only the large parcel to the east is located within the Hillcrest master plan today. The master plan would be revised to include the two adjacent parcels into Neighborhood 6. So the blue area would now be included in Neighborhood 6. Also, staff is proposing to change the master plan design standards for Neighborhood 6 only. The current setbacks are measured from the curb sometimes, and other times, it's not, and it doesn't quite make sense when it was written. So the site, and because of the site is, because Hawthorne is a public street, it doesn't make sense to have such strict setbacks, like most of Hill, like most of the Hillcrest community. Therefore, the changes would define the setbacks from the specific street, as you can see. So the top is the existing requirements, and then the bottom is the proposed. The proposed would be three feet to the front property line, which is really 16 feet if you're measuring it from the curb. Garage door spacing the street would have to maintain a 20-foot-long driveway. And then the Park Avenue and Magnolia would be 10 feet to the property line, 25 feet to the curb. And then there would be no setback apartments on the alleys in Hillcrest on both of those sides, and then theoretically, they would also own the alleys. The city has no use for the alley, as it's internal to the Hillcrest campus, and will be closed through traffic with the proposed development. However, due to the posting requirements onsite, staff is asking that council continue case number 90-19VAC to the February 3rd meeting for a review at that time. Staff will present this topic in more detail at that meeting. The proposed development is adjacent to single-family Hillcrest Homes to the north, single-family residential homes to the south, east, and west. The homes on the south of the project site are through lots, and there are rear yards and detached garages based Hawthorne. The proposed residential buildings will also be constructed with similar materials with the surrounding homes, which will allow the development to remain compatible to the immediate surrounding area. Staff is engaged in an independent consultant, LSA, to prepare an initial study mitigating negative declaration for the project in accordance with California Environmental Quality Act and the City of Laverne Environmental Guidebook. Staff finds that with certain mitigation measures, the project will not have a significant effect on the environment. The initial study is also attached through your reference, and will also be brought back for the council at the next meeting to review, as the vacation is also part of that study. A notice was sent out to the surrounding neighborhood inviting them to a public workshop that was held in July. Two residents attended the meeting with no concerns that were raised. A notice for this public hearing was mailed to all adjacent property owners within 300 feet, and published in the Inland Valley Daily Bulletin, and staff hasn't received any feedback from any residents. Staff, the Development Review Committee, and the Planning Commission recommend that the city council conditionally approve case numbers 26-19MPA, 27-19VC, 90-19VAC, and 88-19MPA. VC, ninety-nine-teen VAC, and eighty-eight-nine-teen MPA, adopting resolution numbers twenty-zero-one and twenty-zero-two, and ordinance number ten-ninety, based on this report and the motions of approval. The Development Review Committee has conditionally approved case number twenty-four-nine-teen PPR and twenty-five-nine-teen PM, contingent of all of the other cases being approved. Staff is recommending that the City Council continue case number ninety-nine-teen VAC to the February third meeting to ensure the required onsite posting is completed. The environmental consultant, Theo, and the applicant, Mike, is, are both present, and I am available if you have any questions with staff. Thank you.
I just want to hear your journey through Hillcrest.
I have to tell you, Candace, this is one of the most involved plans that I've seen in sixteen years. The devolishing of the previous, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight improvements that were made in the property had to be erased. We have parking issues, we have design issues. I'm really involved in the project, I really appreciate the work. It's a public hearing.
I think you first want to hear from the applicant or the consultant before...
Sure, Matt, what are you doing?
I'm Mike Townsend. Council members, my name is Mike Townsend, I represent Hillcrest today, thank you, Candace. Hillcrest is grateful for any opportunity to better serve the older adults of Laverne. The City Council meeting here is a culmination of eighteen months of service by a committee of over two dozen individuals representing residents, prospects, board, community, and family members, and associates. I'm honored to represent them today. The reason behind all their hard work is the truth that Hawthorne is essential in meeting the financial needs of existing and future Hillcrest residents. Coincidentally, nationally, ten thousand people turn sixty-five every day. Regionally, there's a huge housing shortage, and locally, Laverne's housing element specifically calls for more senior housing. Our Hawthorne lot is available. So Hillcrest needs to get bigger, there's a recognized need for such growth, and with your support, Hillcrest and Hawthorne can be a solution. Here's some key points about the project. We're not building to capacity or asking any unusual favors. We've been very cooperative and appreciative of all the support and guidance we've received from the city. We've bent the project considerably in many ways to comply. We're looking to be a good neighbor with a project that fits in and adds value to the area. This is a great project worthy of a mitigated negative declaration. This development is very much like the previous Hillcrest developments in the adjacent area Oak Crest and Park Avenue Homes. Both built in Hillcrest in the last twenty years, both well-received and now both full. Except they're going to be better. Our new homes are going to be improvements on those projects because we've learned a lot. They're a single-story, they're light, bright, healthy homes, they'll be centered around a social courtyard, senior-friendly designs with energy efficiency, and part of our continuum of care. There is also a very consumer-oriented undertaking at work here. By necessity, the state requires us to pre-sell these homes. Fifty percent must be pre-sold with deposit before we can start construction. I'm happy to tell you that all fourteen are sold. So these are not spec homes. We know who's moving in, and those people have been helpful in helping us design these properties. We believe this will benefit all the residents of Hillcrest. There'll be increased economies of scale, most of the project will be funded by new insurance fees, marginal revenues are much greater than marginal expenses, so the whole campus will benefit. Our neighbors will get a beautiful new development, much less impactful than other options. There's going to be lots of infrastructure improvements, as Candace suggested, and we'll be a financially healthier neighbor to continue to share our campus with all. The City of Laverne will be able to better serve older residents, will be able to help you fulfill those housing mandates, will be a stronger community partner, will have improved infrastructure. We're going to remove an old home and a maintenance yard. We're preserving or planting many trees, more than double the number of the trees that were there previously. The homes will complement the neighborhood, there's no common building being built, just residences. And we feel that courtyard will be a credit to the neighborhood. But that's of all, grandparents are just great neighbors. In conclusion, the Hawthorne project offers hope and health to Hillcrest. It addresses societal needs. It will be a positive addition to the neighborhood, and we promise this, we will mitigate our noise, our dust, and confusion while the point of contact for concerns, that's me, we're just not an out-of-town developer. We'll continue to welcome our neighbors onto our very unusual open campus, and we'll continue to love and care for Laverne's older residents. Thank you.
Any questions?
No, simply a statement that a few families that I know will now allow me to visit with them again, now that this project moved.
Matthew, would you like to say anything?
Thank you, I would like to just express my great appreciation to the mayor, to each City Council member, and for the city staff, especially Candace, for all of her work and the great cooperation. I'd like to acknowledge and congratulate my staff for the excellent work that they did in planning and involving all the resident volunteers, prospective residents, and many others who've been a part of this for, for more, about two years now, in the detailed planning, and we're so pleased that we're presented to you, and we look forward to your decision this evening. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Matthew. Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody would like to speak on this project? Seeing any hands or any papers to close the public hearing? Okay. The Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission have recommended the City Council conditionally approve case number twenty-six-nine-teen MPA, twenty-seven-nine-teen VC, ninety-nine-teen VAC, eighteen and nineteen GPA, and adopt resolution numbers two thousand and one, two thousand and two, and ordinance ten-ninety. They would also like us to conditionally approve twenty-four-nine-teen PPR and twenty-five-nine-teen PM, and hold in abeyance until our next council meeting, ninety-nine-teen VAC, to ensure the required onsite posting is completed. Is there a motion? So moved. A second?
Second.
He's voted.
Ordinance ten-ninety, ordinance of the City of Laverne approving case twenty-seven-nine-teen VC, a request by Hillcrest Homes to change the zone designation from PR four-point-five-D to institutional for the site located at sixteen-nine-teen Hawthorne and twenty-five-fourty-nine Magnolia.
I said that. I have to do this. Thank you. If you can ask her to come in if you want to.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this urgency ordinance is brought to you out of the direction of council at the last meeting in December, where we discussed some testimony regarding some short-term rentals. At that point, you asked staff to go back and look at putting together a moratorium for you to consider tonight. The city attorney has done that. This proposed moratorium will provide a forty-five-day pause button on any short-term rentals. Those are constituted as any rentals that are less than thirty days. That is intended to give staff the opportunity to go back and do some research as to what would be some recommended longer-term ordinance that could be put in place, whether that is complete prohibition, or to look at some type of process to allow for short-term rentals to occur. But in the meantime, this is the recommendation, it is before you for consideration. You do have set of speaker cards that, of people that would like to speak on this item, and I know, sorry, and I know that you also received some correspondence over the weekend, which we have printed out, card in front of the highest for you. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, or you have something to comment on?
Public comments, please. Okay, we are going to go to public comment on this item, and I have a number of speaker cards. If you wish to address the council on this issue, you would please tell out a speaker card, you can do it before or after, there's blue cards at the podium. And first up is George Richards. George?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on the issue of short-term rentals. I would urge you to vote against this ban and allow us to utilize our empty bedrooms as short-term rentals. This does not take away from housing, since we don't rent out the entire house for short-term stays. We have provided a place for students of the University of Laverne and other local colleges who come from different parts of the world to study and experience our American culture. We also provide a place for travelers to stay for a reasonable price. We are considerate of our neighbors, and I assure you that we do not allow any wild parties or disruptive behavior. Visitors that we have had spend money at the local stores and restaurants to experience income to the city. Thank you for listening, and please allow us to use our homes for short-term visits.
Thank you, George. Thank you for your correspondence as well. Letitia Moreno. I didn't get that name. B-L-I-E-T-T-A.
Alietta. Pull the microphone down. Thank you for the busy night. Good evening, and thank you so much for giving us time once again to discuss a situation that affects our lives and continues to affect our emotional and mental health. My name's Alietta Moreno. I've lived in the city of Laverne for over thirty years. My husband and I took many years to decide to move from Glendora to the beautiful city of Laverne, where we heard it was a beautiful place to live. We felt our children would thrive in this community, have a safe neighborhood to play and live in, and for the most part, we made an excellent choice. We have been blessed with mostly a friendly and supportive neighborhood. We could not foresee the future. We never thought that purchasing the city in Laverne meant we could possibly end up living by a home being used as a wedding venue, because after all, we purchased in a residential area in Laverne. After a couple of years of loud parties ending, wakehouse midnight traffic consisting of intoxicated people leaving parties, people getting into arguments in our front yard late in the night after the events, finding broken bottles and tossed cans in our front yards, having high traffic as guests are shuttled back and forth from local elementary schools to the property. Some neighbors started a petition to stop the weddings. The problem did not really go away, it just slowed down and slowly converted into an Airbnb. The Airbnb has produced many of the same problems, parties, strangers coming and going into our neighborhoods where our children play. Having a code associated with the business would be a start to helping the problem. However, the fines we've charged not only increase sufficiently for reprimand offenders, but by any law broken, the person should lose the privilege and lose their license. Some with flagrant dilations should be closed down after one warning. Having a code associated with the business does not help us with different violators. We are asking for a code for short-term rentals for less than thirty days with a monetary fine for people that advertise. We're people just like you, and we deserve to live in a home that we feel safe every night, that we feel our children sit in the front yard and not be approached by strangers. How would you like to live right next to an Airbnb with all on the scene? And what about the value of our homes and our property? I want to thank you so much again for your time.
Thank you very much.
I like the one way to come, though, I don't know what happened. What are you doing? Good evening. My name is Kelly Bracine, I live at five-zero-seven-five Old Ranch Road. We've lived in our home for close to seven years. When we first looked at the home, we were informed that the neighbor behind us hosted weddings and had people park at openings for elementary, and then we'd shuttle the guests in by bus to be dropped off at her property. Why am I bringing this up? I want to bring to your attention that the problem started before the Airbnb. This was happening every weekend, much to the dismay of the neighborhood, pumping music, people walking back to their cars, and unnecessary safety concerns within the neighborhood. Two neighbors who no longer live in the neighborhood went door-to-door, creating a petition with over three hundred people to shut this property down with the weddings. This neighbor was disturbing the peace of the neighborhood for monetary gain. This problem with the wedding was on the front page of the San Gabriel Valley Tribune. Not exactly how you want to publicize the sweet city of Laverne. So in fact, this is a second petition to circulate around this neighborhood about the exact same owner, with now different businesses, all why being repeatedly putting the safety of the neighborhood into question. Two years ago, when I called the city to ask about Airbnb business in Laverne and see if they were okay in Laverne, I was told yes, they were okay. However, they needed to have a business license, and at that time, the homeowner did not, the homeowner did not have one. I was told by Eric in the city planning office I could do a petition when I was nine months pregnant, with two other children that were six and four at the time. Just simply not going to happen. We've watched as the Airbnb has gone from two to four rooms in the last two years alone. It has doubled in size, and it still has room to double. And within the last month, has dropped back down to two rooms. Please understand that my husband, as well as other neighbors, do not, we do not care if you rent your home or you rent out your room, but please, for a minimum of a month. Just like the wedding business, people come into the neighborhood for one night with no respect for who or what are around them, and the next day, they are off, while we remain living next to a night-by-night rental. The wedding business and the Airbnb business are the same type of business model. They are transitory people coming in for one night, and they simply won't be back. There's no way to track these people, there's no way to figure out who's coming into your neighborhood. There is a vetting process, the vetting process is you go online, you create an account with Airbnb, and you simply rent the room. I've done it myself down at the beach for a family vacation. I haven't done it in a suburb. This comes down to risk versus reward. Does the risk far outweigh the reward? It does. Would you like to live next to one of these homes? We are not the first family to live in this house and have issues with this neighbor. And the fact that the neighbor is monetizing this property for the second time. The Houston family was happy to sell us their home, and we were so happy to purchase it. We looked for two years for a property in Laverne. We had specifics of exactly what we wanted. When we found out that we got this house, my husband and I were in church, and we couldn't help, I just started crying. We felt so thankful to get this house, I can't tell you. This family that lived in the house has experienced the exact same problems that we have, but with completely different circumstances. They went through it with their kids with the wedding business, and now we're going through it with our kids living next to an Airbnb. We're thankful for the family that wanted... We're thankful for the family that wanted us to have the house, and we gave the neighbor a fair shake, just as Ryan and I would to anyone. If you know Ryan and I, you know that we are extremely fair people. We do not want to take away her right to rent out her home, nor would we want anyone to do that to us. However, we simply only want it to be 30 days or greater. Ryan and I are the people you want as neighbors. We're supportive neighbors. We're the parents that volunteer for anything that our children need. We're the neighbors when we find out that there is someone that has been widowed on the street, or they're simply alone, come to our house for Christmas breakfast. How many of you can say that about one of your neighbors? Probably not a lot. That's who Ryan and I are. We're involved with friends and family in the community and strongly involved in our church community. At the end of the day, this individual that I live next to is suing the city. However, it shouldn't stop you from doing your jobs or helping our family and the other neighbors on this street, as well as the other neighbors in the Esperanza neighborhood, to safeguard us from night-by-night renters coming in. Please, do the right thing and stop the night-by-night rentals. We hope this neighbor is able to rent out their rooms on a lease for a minimum of 30 nights at a time. Please, have the income and use your property as you wish, but without placing the other neighbors and children in jeopardy. My husband and I are not unreasonable people, but when we moved into this property, we were told that the wedding business had stopped, and indeed, it had stopped, but she was still having occasional weddings. Our house has been aided from people that we feel that as retaliation for calling in to the police department on weddings. We've had people come to our door and be belligerent with us. We've had people pull themselves up onto the wall when we've been in our backyards and scream obscenities at us in front of our children with my parents present. We're tired. We are tired. I want to read you a few reviews that have been placed on the Airbnb. The last month, I had people contact me and ask me, hey, what did you give the city council? I'll tell you what I gave the city council. I gave them copies of actual reviews that were on the Airbnb website for this individual's property. Dominique, December 2018. This house was very unique and comfortable. We stayed for two nights, and it was lovely. Had a few problems with owner due to an extra unexpected guest. A friend of mine got too drunk to drive, suggested he could sober up at the Airbnb before he drove. In parentheses, who wants a drunk driver on the road? But owner did not understand. She acted like we were destroying her house and ended up kicking us out at 5:00 a.m. Just what I want as a neighbor, to have a drunk driver leave a property. Would you like that in your neighborhood? Vanessa and Peter, July 2019. Beautiful home. Room was clean and very cute. Lots of charm and personal touch located in a lovely neighborhood. Checking process was very detailed and helpful. There are very specific house rules which are fair and reasonable. However, we were a bit disappointed with the noise enforcement, since we made every effort to be quiet and respectful by the 10:00 p.m. mark, but were woken up with loud noise by other tenants at 4:00 a.m. A message was sent to host, but no response. After an hour of waiting for host to resolve the noise situation with still no response, we had to personally approach the other tenant to resolve the issue. What was disappointing was that the host did not respond or even follow up about it. Would you like to live next to this? One more, one more, and I'll be done. Alex, February 2019. We arrived late from a long drive to all the lights being off outside and inside the house. Also, we had to help other guests enter the house with our cell flashlights. One of these guests being elderly and needing a cane, apparently there is a silent alarm with no instructions as to use a different door. She messaged me to use a different door, so I used the side doors instructed, because I had to be out of the house at 5:00 a.m. Nowhere in the message did say other times aside from 5:00 a.m. to use the side door. Why is this a problem? Because when a silent alarm goes off, who shows up? Laverne PD shows up. If Laverne PD doesn't know who's in the house, what's going to happen? They automatically assume, right, that this is an intruder. They don't know them from atoms. So we're asking you to please, you can take some time, put a moratorium on it, and please, when you pass it, think of everyone in these neighborhoods, think of the wedding issues, and please attach a fine to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Olivia Sargent.
Good evening, mayor and council members, and also, excuse me, the members of our city, because to me, my name's Olivia Sargent. I'm an Airbnb host.
If you could just direct your...
Oh, I'm sorry. And I hosted along with my husband. He's unfortunately not here this evening. He's taking care of our son. I just, I wrote you all a letter over the weekend, but I also wanted to put a face to this letter. I was extremely perturbed by all of the comments that I was unable to attend during our last meeting. I can completely relate and understand the frustration that these guests or these neighbors are having with these Airbnbs. My husband and I, we rented a two-night minimum. We have, we live on the property, and we make it every effort to know exactly who's coming to our home. It sounds unfortunately like the ones that have currently been having problems, it sounds like two specific ones. They're not doing that, and I think at this point, I would hate for us to lose out on the opportunity as a city to get rid of Airbnb, but I think that there should be regulations. There are other cities in the area that do similar things. They offer an occupancy tax, which I think would be something that would be beneficial to the city. It'd be extra funds that could be used towards whatever may be needed. There's a minimum based on the square footage. So for our home, for example, it's just a little under 600 square feet. We only allow two guests per night. So we never have the opportunity to even allow a party to happen at our home, because there's a minimum. I'm there. I know what time they arrive, so I'm there to meet them. I think that there are opportunities that we could do to limit the very sad and distraught neighbors that what they've been going through. I would welcome you to, if you haven't already, read our positive reviews. We live just into downtown area. All of our guests that come, they all, for the majority, are coming to visit the colleges, visit family members. You'd be surprised to hear this, but there's likely some of your in-return family and friends have actually stayed in our Airbnb, because they're coming here because they used to be former residents of Laverne, and they want to come back and visit. We don't have hotels or motels here in Laverne. I'm sure there's a reason for that, but I think it's a great opportunity for us to be able to house people here. I currently have a guest that has to speak this evening. They're here for seven days. They're attending a sewing convention at the Ontario Center, and they chose to stay in Laverne versus staying in Ontario. They're shopping at our grocery stores, they're shopping at our shops, and they're staying at our restaurants. I just welcome the opportunity to maybe speak with some of the other Airbnb hosts that have been successful, that have not had complaints, that have had nothing but a positive feedback, and allow that to possibly change the perception and change what is going on with these specific properties and these night-by-night rentals. So thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Olivia. Kim Herrera.
Hello, everyone. I'm Kim Holder Herrera, and I spoke at the last meeting. You may remember me, so I won't get into everything that I said last week, but I live at 2438 Eighth Street. I have, I am a property owner and have offered my property as a long-term rental previously to my short-term rental with Airbnb, and I've done that for the past year with a lot of success. I did some research and chose to use Airbnb to help me establish, to help establish myself as a host. I also tried with VRVO for a while, but I dropped that as that wasn't, it had inactivity. So I really like the way Airbnb works. So during the past year, I have gained status as what is called a super host, which means I'm highly rated, experienced, and knowledgeable. And my guests look at that, they want to come because I am a super host. I work hard to maintain this rating and to continue to offer a beautiful, clean, relaxing, and safe place for visitors that come to our community of Laverne. And just to let you know again, the types of guests that I have, very similar to Olivia's. I have guests that are students, students' parents visiting, teachers, world travelers. Last week, I had a couple from Denmark staying with me. They stayed for eight days. I have many people like that. I have people that travel for business. And in fact, I have a woman that's staying with me now that is also going to the quilt convention. She chose to stay here instead of Plamont and Ontario. Okay, a little bit about my business. I built up this business, and I built a good reputation and healthy business here in Laverne. And I have contracts with these future guests for 2020 as well as 2021. And I expect to generate approximately $68,000 to $70,000 in the next two years. That's 2020 and 2021. 2019, I grossed, that was my first year, I grossed $32,000. So it has become a real job for me. Most of the people that I have stayed with me stay between two and five days generally. I have people that stay for two weeks, three weeks. I have a young woman that's staying with me later in the year for three months, and she's finishing up her college program at Casa Colina. And I often have requests for that kind of stay. But most of my people stay between three and five days. Okay. So if I am forced to cancel and abandon these reservations, my reputation will be destroyed, and my income will end. I don't see myself going back to long-term rentals. I don't see a difference, except it's more work for me to have a short-term rental, but it's work that I enjoy, and I'm making more money at it. But I really enjoy it, and I'm really happy to offer a good, safe, as I said, beautiful spot for my guests. Okay, so I do have these legally binding contracts with my guests and with Airbnb, and money has been exchanged between the parties. I don't receive it until the guests complete their first night with me, but Airbnb has already collected it and are holding it for me. So with that in mind, if these contracts aren't honored, I am going to penalize and possibly lawsuits that would be issued against me, and I don't want that to happen. I have promised these people that they have a place here, and I'm committed to it. Okay, the other thing is, recently, I have become the sole financial provider for my household, which consists of my husband and I. Our children are grown, and they're out on their own. But the reason that I am the sole provider, financial provider, is that my husband can't work right now. He's undergoing aggressive chemotherapy. And he just started his first treatment last week, and he is totally out of commission. So that income is gone. So in closing, I just want to remind you that I am a law-abiding citizen here. I follow all the laws and the rules associated with conducting my business here in Laverne. I don't feel that I should be penalized for a small percentage of these short-term bad hosts. Currently, I checked this morning, and there are 31 Airbnb stays here in Laverne, 31. Two of them are a problem. And I have already put a complaint into one of them that I know was a problem that I could see, and Airbnb took that off. I don't know for how long, but they take it seriously. They want to keep their business going. So any complaint by any neighbor is welcome, and they are there to try to resolve it quickly. Whenever I need to contact them, they are right there. You call them, they'll send you an email. There's no 24-hour delay. They call me back within the hour. So there is support there from the Airbnb community, from the neighbors in our community, and I'm happy to share that direct link with anybody here that would like to see it, although you can find it on the airbnb.com website. Okay. Finally, I just wanted to also say that we are all here, a community with united goal of continuing to make Laverne a safe, thriving community. It is important for all of us to talk to our neighbors and try to resolve disputes before we ask our government to step in and solve these problems. And I do not see, with some of the people that are against this, I don't see that they're reaching out and talking to the neighbors, and I don't know what that's all about. It is hard sometimes to address these issues, but there's always a way to solve a problem. And, okay, there are already laws in place that address illegal activities. At the last meeting, there was some talk about prostitution and drug use. If there's ever a problem like that, you know, we just have to call the police and get them involved. And if this happens continually, you note it, and then, you know, get your petitions going. I personally do not want to see further restrictions on my freedom and right to make a living here in my community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kim.
Sure.
Christine Ramirez.
I was asked last minute to come by, so I'm really not prepared, but I do want to let you know my experience as from Airbnb. I too am a host, and as well had a hardship in my family that caused me to look for that as a means to save my property. I've only been in this city of Laverne for about two years, and I love it here. I love my little place, and my husband too, had a four-stage liver cancer and wasn't expected to live very long. So I didn't expect to be using Airbnb very long, but I still have the need to do that, to keep my place and to be able to take care of business as well. I sympathize with the people that have had that circumstance with Airbnb. I would not want to go through that either, so I understand their complaints against it. But I have, too, had very good, positive experiences. The people that have visited my place as well were here to visit the universities and colleges around the area. They've always been respectful of my property, and I would expect that as a host, that if I had any problem, I also informed my neighbors if they had any problem. I gave them my number directly to make sure that there would be no problem with using my home at the Airbnb. So I would like to say that, along with these other people, that it is a benefit to the community of Laverne and the people that do live in here, that there are circumstances that make it very necessary sometimes, or just an opportunity to meet nice people and have nice people come into your home and to share something with them. And that's all I have to say. I'd like to see that we would be able to continue to have that opportunity.
Thank you, Christine. Is there anybody else who would like to address this issue?
Hello. Pam Berry. I have not hosted with Airbnb, but I have hosted with English-language cultural programs associated with the University of Laverne. And I'm concerned about the blanket moratorium for 45 days, because as others have said, it's really hard to know that there are some situations that have gotten out of control. There are laws that need to be enforced on those. But there's lots of people that are benefited by having the opportunity to be a host. But there's lots of people that are benefited by having the opportunity to be a host. In my case, I had students from Spain, Brazil, Saudi Arabia, Japan, Taiwan, and China. They were either young adults, or middle-aged adults, or teen student groups. I even had some university professors from China, and teachers and guides. For them, it's an opportunity to attend classes at University of Laverne, usually an intensive English program. And some of them were a unit a month, but most of them were short-term. There might be a group coming for five to seven days, or students coming two to three weeks. Maybe they were doing multiple city stops, so they would be in Laverne for about five days. Then they'd go to New York or San Francisco. And they would do classes during the day at PDLX, which is at the University of Laverne. They would do weekends, either outings to landmarks in California, or blending with the host family, practicing their English, learning what's different about how our homes are, how our families are, even like how it was odd for them to see women drive, you know, just interesting things. And I enjoyed the cultural connection with different families. It was beneficial for me because I had been through kind of a bad divorce, and I was alone. My kids had gone to college, and it helped me keep my home. So, oh, by the way, those students, they love to shop. They come with a pretty fat wallet, and they took home a lot of things. So that was a good thing. No neighbors were disrupted. I drove students to school, and I picked them up at the end of the day. Occasionally, they would take a Uber if they were old enough, and they would go down to the shops, or to Claremont, or somewhere else. Nobody was in jeopardy. And my concern is there's a lot of situations like that. I just had an email, they still send me emails from the group, that they've got some coming from Ecuador, they've got some coming from Japan. They're looking for homes for them. And those would be stuck, groups coming from other countries to Laverne, who would not have homes. So I'm kind of concerned about the moratorium. I do think you need to work on something. I do think you need to come up with some guidelines. I don't know that the number of nights is the issue. I think it's the, maybe the lack of policy or enforcement of current laws. I'm concerned about the moratorium, so I just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Kim. Is there anybody else who would like to address this?
Good evening. My name is Noah Snyder. I live over on Hayes Drive, and I too am an Airbnb host. I've been hosting for a little over a year at this point. And I just want to let you know, it truly has been a fantastic experience. I do not host, I host one room within my apartment. It's, you know, a small eight-by-ten room. And I have hosted folks from, students at University of Laverne. I'm hosting an Argentinian student right now, at present. I have hosted visitors who are attending the Pomona, the Pomona Fair, the LA Comedy Fair in Pomona. And these are folks who spend, do spend quite a lot of money within city limits and are boon for the economy. And I just think a moratorium, you know, could affect local businesses. Beyond that, I just additionally want to state that most of the folks that I've hosted are between a week and two weeks. Super short-term rentals are few and far between. And ninety percent of the time, it's either students or folks who previously lived in Laverne or lived locally and are visiting. Their kids, or a number of other folks. And I just want to encourage all of you to vote no on this moratorium. I think it needs to be studied out further, and especially impacts and effects on local economy.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilor. Good evening, Mayor and Councilor. My name is Mark Ramos. Two-two-four-seven-second-three. I am not an Airbnb host, but I came tonight to support my good friend, my dear friend, Kim Holder-Herrera. And I think you could probably not find a better ambassador for our wonderful city than Kim. I can guarantee those guests that are staying with her when they say, after a long convention or they're there, or going to visit local universities. If they're looking for dinner, you can guarantee that Kim is telling them to walk downtown. It seems to me like this may be an overreaction to a problem that we have in maybe, I assume, the north part of town. If we have a problem with a venue where someone is hosting weddings at their residence, then we have a problem with that, and not necessarily with some of these rentals. It appears this problem's been going on for quite a while. So maybe there's an issue with maybe not renting that venue till midnight. Maybe you stop it at ten o'clock at night. I can tell you that we once had a party in our backyard, and my son's band played, and three songs in, the police department showed up to shut him down. So I know we have a very active and responsive police department here in Laverne. But I would say there is probably, in my opinion, not a need for a moratorium. I think we have very capable and able staff here in the city that is able to work on policy or ordinance while this continues. And if we have a problem with a wedding site venue, then maybe we make sure we contact, the city contacts the owner of that property to kind of put some structure in place about what is happening there. And I do not believe that you necessarily need an ordinance or a moratorium to do that, that you can actually move towards if there are issues with fights and everything you want in the front yard, that you can move towards a public nuisance issue on that piece of property there, and maybe not harm the good folks of this city that are actually using their residence for extra income. And as my dear friend Kim said, with her husband battling cancer, this is a make-or-break situation for that family. And the woman who came spoke about her and her family volunteering. I've been here since ninety-five. We met Dan and Kim soon after that. We moved here. Our kids are the same age. Kim and her family are super volunteers. A lot of the work that happened at Vernon with Karen Higgins and the garden, Kim was right there beside her with a lot of that kind of work. So I just don't think there's a need for the moratorium at this time. I think, again, I will reiterate, I believe you have very capable and prepared staff that does not need a moratorium to move towards developing some kind of a structure or an ordinance here in the city. So I would urge you to vote no on a moratorium, but maybe give staff direction on what to do in developing something. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Mercine, and I live at fifty-seventy-five Old Ranch Road. And, you know, when I've listened to people speak tonight, I feel like this falls into two buckets, right? There is the people that are doing it the right way, having maybe one or two rentals at a time and really having a good vetting process. And then there's the second bucket, where you have people that have really taken it to the nth degree, and in my opinion, violated the spirit of the policy and have made this a volume-based problem disturbing the peace of several neighborhoods. And I think if you consider the city of Laverne and the bandwidth that we have to monitor this, we don't have the bandwidth to monitor this. This has to be an all-or-nothing approach. And I think there's been some folks that have made some really good points tonight about how they've been able to monetize, and it's been good for their life. But I think the answer to that, when we talk about college students and things of that nature, is that something that they can do for over thirty days? A semester for a college student is going to be six months. You can still monetize this, and we won't have the transitory nature of night by night, new people not understanding where they're coming from. Secondly, I want to give a little bit of context to where we, how we got to this point. So for two months, my wife and I spoke to Tim Hepburn about the problem, and it never made it onto the city agenda. I cannot speak to a man's character when I do not know his character, but I will say this. This was a large enough issue between two homeowners that it could have got on the city agenda, and it should have, long before what we did in December. The letters that were sent into City Hall, the city manager, to Tim Hepburn, we have copies of from multiple neighbors on Old Ranch and Esperanza. Out of all the houses we went to, three people, three people did not want to sign a petition. There was over a hundred and fifty names on that petition, the Old Ranch property. You know, we don't really know what to think at this point. It's not up for our family to judge or say, and we truly don't know. What we do know is that three days after the last council meeting, on Thursday night, we had a Monday night meeting, Councilmember Hepburn was at the property owner's house for a holiday event as the guest honoree. I'm not saying anything either way about it. To me, you tell them the way you think. I think that's a conflict of interest. So guys, I mean, bottom line, you know, and I want to address one other thing, too, one of Airbnb guests said about communication with homeowners. We tried to communicate with the homeowner at Old Ranch Road. When a separate incident happened, and a fifty-foot pine tree took out half of our backyard, I tried civilly to talk to her over the wall about, can we address the shared wall that has been destroyed because of her tree? And her response is, what is there to talk about? I want everything in writing from you? Then I said, okay, I'll send it in writing. I followed up with her over the fence. Did you get the letter? Her response was, I don't read anything that you sent me. This is the type of character that we're dealing with, and it has to stop. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ryan. Anybody else want to address this? You're not raising your hand to speak, you?
Oh, no. Working it here. Directly on the issue, I have to say, Nathan, Jeff Basler, eighteen-three-four. Directly on a point, I am in support of the moratorium, but I also am in support of giving the homeowners that are relying on this and have contracts an opportunity, if they do not have any complaints about their property, to apply for an exemption to it, as long as they still have staffs and no complaints. And that is kind of a happy medium, I think, in terms of how to deal with this. But it's very complaint-based on that, and all or nothing on that. And then I want to address one more thing related to this. At the last, after the last council meeting, I met this couple over here. They bought the house in North Laverne. It was under their means, but they wanted a nice neighborhood to live in. Wife was able to leave her corporate job because they were getting someplace under their means. She could stay home with her family, you know, with her children. And it was a nice peaceful neighborhood for them. That's what we promote as a city of Laverne. That is what we're offering up. Unfortunately, it's not exactly what they got. They have a problem neighbor with the Airbnb next door, selling rooms by the night, and it's brought a bad element to their hustle. They've got people yelling at them over the fence, looking through their back windows. You know, a lot of the time, the husband's away on travel for work, which means she's home with the kids alone. And this situation is not a good way to have, you know, a peaceful home. And Tim, you stake your reputation in being there to support the people of our community when they have a problem. And your biggest supporters, they tout your openness on everything. And I was horrified to learn that they had told you about this for months with no action. And what they got was their neighbor saying that they had more pull with the city than they have. And I learned that you're the pull. With, that's counter to everything I've ever heard of your reputation. And I think you understand me a huge part of it.
Anybody else like to address this issue? Okay. Yes.
I am not prepared at all, but what is your name? Jacqueline Thornton. I live on Third Street. I'm an Airbnb host. Prior to that, I had students from the university for many, many, many years. I'm a former flight attendant, international flight attendant. My guests are respectful, amazing. I've never had any problems. And I don't, like I said, I'm not really prepared to talk right now. I don't feel very good. But the dinosaur in the room, or whatever, that, what is it? Elephant. We know what the elephant is.
About the same size.
We know what we're talking about here. And I, you know, I don't know how everything runs. I'm just a little person in the community. But I don't understand why this person has not been fined for many, many years and stopped from causing havoc and chaos nonstop since I've lived here. I've been here twenty-nine years. And it's just hard to sit back and listen to this. I'm a single person living in my home as well. I need my income. I enjoy it. And it's part of the reason I stayed in Laverne, actually, because I was considering moving. The last four years, I've been looking around, but I decided to stay, and I started doing the Airbnb in May. I do have some people that come for one night. When you look at people that are requesting rooms, you can kind of tell if somebody wants to use your house for a hookup. You can. You can figure it out. I couldn't figure it out at the beginning. I didn't have those people come, but you can kind of figure it out if you know what you're doing. But there are people that come for one night. They're, they've been traveling around. They're flying out of Ontario. It's convenient. Maybe they want to go to the lakes. Maybe they came for the races one day. There's just all kinds of different reasons why people might come for one day. I have a lot of parents that come to visit their students at, you know, Claremont Colleges or Laverne. I have a gentleman that is a repeat guest of mine that comes to see his father, who has Alzheimer's and lives in a home in Claremont. On his days off, he's a professor in Eugene, Oregon. I could go on and on. There's, I've never had any problems. And because one person is disrespectful on every level, I don't know. I don't, I, there's got to be something to be done about that, and, you know, so anyway.
Thank you.
I wasn't prepared, sorry.
Good night. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Bring it back up here. Thank you very much, everybody, for your comments.
Yeah, as a matter of the record, I really brought up the moratorium. And I wanted to give our staff time to fashion an ordinance that we can look at and see how fair we could make it. Under the circumstances, a gentleman came up and spoke. The majority of the Airbnb hosts seem to be very organized, very mature people that offer a place to stay in Laverne. I think that's a good thing. I would hope that this group, that there's thirty-two Airbnbs, why don't you form an association, and so you can monitor yourselves? If you're able to come to the city as a group, have a spokesperson in case there are some issues that you want to bring before the council. I think, again, as a moratorium, I was looking to give the city an opportunity to study this issue at length. So we didn't provide an ordinance that was restrictive or that was arbitrary. So I hope people in that vein understand, I didn't bring this about to make an individual take their income away.
Anybody else?
Sure, I've got a few things to say about this. I think it's unfortunate... I think it's unfortunate that we have a community, a country, where companies start up business ideas and don't take the full weight and measure of what it is they're doing. I think this really lies on Airbnb for not releasing their own product, for not taking care of the community around them in which they're thriving. So that leaves it to the community, to the city council, to the local government, to do their work. Well, the way the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California are written, governments are less able to do things prescriptively, specifically, than private enterprise. Governments have to use broad brushes. Governments don't really paint between lines. We just paint big swathes of surface and then things have to move forward. Which makes something like this challenging because we have, we have residents who are struggling right now because some can say it's simply their neighborhood and some neighbors that don't want to cooperate and play nicely. Some will say that it's a, it's, it's governments run amok trying to take away their civil rights and their civil liberties. It's not an easy decision to make. Do we allow a few people to continue to suffer so that the other Airbnb hosts, who all talk about what fine renters or tenants they have for a short-term basis, a few have talked about their neighbors being willing and cooperative and, and being friendly to it? The only neighbors that we've heard speak have been neighbors that have been upset. And that's not unusual, but it's a challenge. It really is a big challenge to try to figure out, all right, where do we go from here? Not interested in taking livelihoods away from people. I know how that works. That's not very good, but we need to do something going forward to help, I think. In this current ordinance, this, this moratorium, there is a provision, section C of the council being able to grant relief. So that's really what I want to focus on because I'm interested in this ordinance stopping what's currently going on. However, I want people to be able to have relief and have fairly immediate relief to be able to continue to go forward until we get the permanent ordinance in place and consider those ramifications. And those ramifications are going to be, try to be specific. So one common thread I heard was that if it's a hosted Airbnb, it appears to me to be less problematic than an unhosted Airbnb. In other words, just a, just a domicile or just a house. If it's, if the Airbnb or the renting is taking place short-term or otherwise, that's somebody's home and there are guests at their house, paid guests, albeit, but a guest, it sounds like there's less trouble. The other thing I'm assuming, so one of the, one of the relief provisions I'm putting in is that, that, that the stays must be hosted regardless of, I mean, during this moratorium, all stays must be hosted. The other thing that I heard, or that I'm assuming, so I'm conjecturing, is that those that are actively engaged in Airbnb experiences that are positive are not without knowledge that their neighbors know what they're doing and their neighbors are okay with their activities. So I'm going to suggest this additional provision for section three because I'm in support of our neighbors, our residents, who have been burdened by this Airbnb because Airbnb didn't do their job. So we have to do it for them. And it's unfortunate that we have to do their job because, as I said, we can't be as prescriptive and precise yet. We're a little more blunt with our tools. So I'm interested in making an amendment to this moratorium ordinance, which would essentially insert in section three where the city council may grant relief from these provisions by these additional pieces. So this would be a section four in there. And section four states that would, would allow a signed petition by six contiguous neighbors, and I'll get into the definition of what contiguous neighbor means in just a minute, requesting relief from the ordinance allowing only hosted stays. So if you're an absentee Airbnb host, this isn't going to apply to you, but if you live there and you're there while the people are renting from you, that this provision would allow that. The second part of that is the definite, definition of a contiguous neighbor, because I don't want an Airbnb host to be able to find six people in Laverne and just have them sign. Contiguous is defined as properties adjoining the subject property or across the public roadway, or adjoining properties of signed contiguous neighbors. So in other words, you've got to build from your property out. You can get one of your neighbors on either side to sign, or the one across the street, or all three of them hopefully, and then you can get the property next to them to sign. But if the neighbor next to you doesn't sign, everybody else down that side is blocked. The house across the street from you can sign, and then you can go one side or the other and move to where you get six neighbors that can sign. I think that can be done in a weekend, which should not interfere with anybody's need to have ongoing business if they're hosting them. So that would be my proposed amendment to this moratorium ordinance. And I can repeat that. So that's my idea.
Well, I have a couple of questions. Yeah, think about that because I have a major question that I heard here tonight is Kim has a couple of years out of income committed from people that want to rent her property. If we did a moratorium legally, where does, where do we stand with that? That's my concern there because you're taking income away from someone that has commitments for the next two years or long-term. Let's even use long-term for anyone that might have beyond this 30-day period that we're talking, 45-day period we're talking about.
I'm not sure of how those user rentals are done through Airbnb, but we did get a letter and we have that from Airbnb. They did not point to any legal concerns related to the moratorium. So I would suggest that they have a provision where it's not paid until stay, so bad ability exists. There's no concern of legal ramifications back to the host Airbnb listing what they expressed.
Well, technically, for any hotel stay you go to, you can cancel within 24 hours prior. So the other question I have is, how will we enforce this moratorium?
As we do all of our ordinances, it would be your complaint?
Complaint?
Yes. So if we get notice of an advertising of a listing for less than 30 days, first of all, we would notify Airbnb and VRBO and any of the other sites that this was a provision. We intend to acknowledge that on the site. But beyond that, we would take complaints that were to come in and we would notify the host if they are in violation of the code and ask them to remove that and then proceed with an admin site process if we don't comply.
Okay. Because even though there's quite a few people here tonight talking in favor of them being host families, last month, we, or last meeting, we had more people here speaking of problems with the rentals. And so beyond that, we also, with the Racine family, we were given a thick packet with pages and pages of neighbors that did send, sign a petition. So we also have that. Do realize, we're not a meeting, those that come out is not speaking for the whole community. So we have to remember all that when we're taking this in. I do like your idea, Mere, listening to what you're offering. It's sad that we have to penalize the ones that are, you know, the host inside the homes. I like that idea that if they live there, if there's an exemption we could do for the hosts that live in the home, that could be an exemption, you know, for them. But the ones that don't live there, you know, I would go for the moratorium if we can pull that out from there or, you know, come up with, you know, some amendment to the moratorium that we have written here.
That's difficult because you're, you're regulating the land use and not necessarily that being a short-term rental versus a longer-term rental and whether or not it's hosted. And you get to yours over here, but just making moratorium apply to non-hosted properties, I think, would be difficult. You're, there are some practical difficulties that if you read up the, in a 45-day moratorium, it says that the council can grant relief from the moratorium on a recommendation from the planning commission. Well, realistically, to get on a planning commission agenda and then come to the city council, you probably don't reach there. It's illegal, it's illegal rather than an immediate grant of relief.
Could we insert an immediate grant of relief thing in there? Based on a petition regardless of whether it's hosted or not? If you can get your six contiguous neighbors to sign a petition, you're allowed to continue, could we grant relief for that? Or is that, is that just too far in legal afield?
You know, I, I suppose it could be done that way.
So it'd be its own section then, rather than kind of shoehorn it into section three?
Right. I'll tell you that the one thing that, the last two meetings, I haven't really heard anyone trying to deal with Airbnb. We received a letter today that has an email address that is devoted to problem solving. And I just wonder whether that's worth a try on a short-term basis while we continue to think about what the ordinance might look at, might look like. Maybe turning the residents on to this, that there are continuing problems on Esperanza and Old Ranch Road and perhaps others, trying to get Airbnb to police their own business. I just offer that because...
I'm going to respectfully disagree on that point with the city attorney. I think we need a moratorium in place. I think if we were to come up with some exception that we can fit in, but we need some type of tools to be able to regulate, and we simply don't have them even in the temporary, going to the point that we're hoping Airbnb is going to respond, but there's no guarantee that if they don't. So it's a good step for Airbnb to try and regulate their own fractures, but in the meantime, we do need some staff tools in place.
Couple of comments, Racine's. Yes, I did take your, your signatures, which was very serious, and I did submit to the city, as Mr. Rosales said, and also Councilmember Carter. As you can see, this is not a simple decision. This affects other people's lives that are expecting income for their homes. Whatever you believe in it or not, I do like Councilmember Davis's suggestion. I think it's a great idea. But as our city manager said, this is something that needs a moratorium on it, but we need a, we need something to protect the residents that are running a, a good business and, and the neighbors are all good with it. Second, Linda Wilkinson's house. There's not many people in Laverne that I don't know, and Linda Wilkinson's boys played baseball and soccer with mine, so, and I was invited to the LBC3, yes I was, along with Wally Emery, along with Kenny Chang, along with Cash that's running for Congress. There was a number of people there and also Gil was there. So it wasn't, it was a Christmas party. And it was very quiet and it was a great, great time. We had a really good time. Sorry if you took it the wrong way, but I did submit those signatures. I did submit it to the city. And you can see, this is not an easy decision. It affects people, people's lives. The most important thing, though, is to make sure that the residents that are having these issues, it gets addressed right now. Because obviously, there's an issue. Whether it be Esperanza or Old Ranch Road, you guys have an issue. And I, I really appreciate the emails from all the people that sent the emails in. These are great suggestions for the city, good neighbor policies, you know, ordinance is in place to make sure. But I, I do support Councilmember Davis's fact that that's a great idea. Because we need to address the people who are actually doing it right. And the people that aren't doing it right, make sure we put in the ordinance that those people get taken care of and they get removed. And that we have an ordinance in place that we can police these situations to make sure that the neighbors aren't having issues, make sure the children are safe. Just like we had in our first meeting before today was our, the 5G antennas. The most important thing is people being safe in our community. And they have a great place to live, they have a great place to play, as my children did. I want to make sure the same thing happens to all of you. So if we can do that, I, I am in favor of that, Mr. Davis. Thank you.
I think Laverne has always been a place that takes care of its own. Christine and Kim, with their husbands, with cancer, every one of us in this room has been affected by that C word. There's somebody in our immediate family or somebody we know that's close to us, and we have to make sure that these people somehow are helped out. So the idea that Mere talked about as far as making an exception, I think is appropriate. And I think for the ones that are not abiding by good citizenship to the community, we need to have the moratorium. So I'd be in favor of the moratorium, but definitely with the exception so that we can really look out for these people that need our help. That'd be Mere's suggestion. So if you'd like to make a move...
Well, wait, let's kind of talk this through, how practically that's going to work. I'd like to not, I'd like to get an approval tonight so we have something in place. I think still working off of section three, and I'm going to defer to Bob a little bit here on practicality of that. And still required to go through the planning commission if there's going to be any exception. That means that they're going to have to work on getting those particulars. And I would say it must be any contiguous neighbor plus additional. So I, what I don't want to have is it be disjointed regarding my hearing. Your definition of contiguous, you can get away from having anybody that, not all of them have to touch your property.
Well, that would be true. Not, you wouldn't have to get all three contiguous properties to your property.
And you could conceivably have more depending on the configuration of your property, but I think it would be something that you want to keep as tight as possible. Because what happens if you get six, but you have somebody that's touching that says no? Now you're going to, I think practically, that's going to be a lot more difficult. I think it should be, you need to make it, put the onus on the host to get those contiguous ones that are going to grant this exception.
I think everybody now understands the complexity of this issue and why a moratorium had to be put in place. Mere Davis has come up with a solution, I think, to part of that, but we have to be able to go through this so that the issue itself is constitutional, it's legal, and we'll hold up where we don't have to be fighting in court with somebody who feels that they've been wronged and hangs their hat on a technicality that we couldn't touch. So please understand that. The people that are here that are, to good hopes, it's unfortunate, there's a few that are making us go through these hoops and doing what we have to do to be correct.
I'll refer, where that will sit tomorrow.
Well, I don't think it makes sense to go through that process and have it go to the planning commission.
Right, no, it would need to be for immediate relief. So it wouldn't go, it'd just go to the planning desk and, and essentially, sort of new section three. So every section from three down is kicked out.
No, a new, totally new section that provided, however, any property owner who satisfies the Mere exemption shall be exempt from the provisions of this ordinance.
Right, that, that one.
Yeah. And it's, it's immediate.
Right.
I mean, if, if you fall into that category where you're doing good work and you can go out and get that kind of a supportive document, bring... go out and get that kind of a supportive document, bring it in, then you don't need to worry about canceling things.
And no complaints.
Well, I think, yeah, that's a tricky... You're cutting me off, sorry.
We are talking all immediately adjacent. Are we comfortable with that? Well, I just want to make sure what we're going to put in place is the rule of council.
Say this again. Say it again, what we're talking about.
I think immediate adjacent is fine. All immediate adjacent, including across the public roadway.
Six, including all immediately. Total is six, but the immediately adjacent must be included.
Right, right. And the other three have to be contiguous to those properties. You can't hopscotch.
Through the process through planning versus...
Right, right. Just those.
Anyone who is interested in the letter that the city received with Airbnb that talks about their complaint process, we'll make that available.
I knew that we do that. Moratorium with ordinance with the Mure exceptions. We have a vote.
For those of you who are wondering, how do I get a list of these exact exemptions? Give us a couple days to put it in, put a document together, and then we will have a written copy available so you know what the rules are, you can go out exactly.
But anybody who's a host, just go ahead and start getting your neighbors' signatures.
Not tonight. So what is the preamble to this? I so-and-so hereby agree that my neighbor can...
I hereby so-and-so agree to host...
Agree to allow?
To allow, to have hosted stays at my residence.
Airbnb.
Well, then, it's a short-term rental. We don't want to piss off VRBO or anybody else, or English whatever. Right, English language stuff. So we don't want to be... See, once again, we can't be too prescriptive. We have to use broad brush.
You're very descriptive, Mayor.
Descriptive, not pre-scripted.
I think before we move on, I would like to thank all the hosts that are doing a great job.
Yeah, thank you.
And bringing people to this city. Thank you.
Those of you hosts that aren't doing a great job, please stop.
Before we move on to item nine, which is public comment, we have a presentation by our city managers.
Fire chief, yes. Mr. Mayor and Council, over last week, there was a decision made, as I shared with you, to temporarily close fire station three for staffing reasons or the availability of staffing. There was an article that was in today's paper that I think accurately reflects the circumstances surrounding that. And so I've asked Chief Leonard to give a brief to council, maybe answering questions that you might have had on it, as well as for the sake and the benefit of the audience is to get an accurate count of what, why the closure, and what it really is and what it isn't.
Chief.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and Council, for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Like the city manager stated, I'd like to provide some clarification on the action that I imposed on the Laverne Fire Department earlier this past week. First of all, the service delivery model that the Laverne Fire Department has had for years was changed last Thursday. It was changed specifically what I did was I browned out rescue ambulance sixty-three from the Esperanza fire station. A brownout in the fire service industry referred to as a unit that's temporarily out of service. It's not closed. A closed unit is something that we've got no intention of opening back up. In this case, we browned out rescue ambulance sixty-three. Little bit of background, the Laverne Fire Department has thirty-three operational personnel that work twenty-four hour shifts. There's eleven of those on duty any given day. Currently, the Laverne Fire Department is experiencing some staffing issues. We have five vacant positions. We have four additional positions that are unfilled because of personal injuries or illnesses. This represents nine individual or open spots in the organization when we only have thirty-three spots altogether. Represents thirty percent of our workforce. The result of this is that the personnel of the Laverne Fire Department have been working five continuous, on a regular basis, five continuous shifts or a hundred and twenty hours straight with no relief. This places a burden on operational efficiency. We just need to make sure our folks that are dealing with life savings situations every day are making wise decisions, not only for their health, but the health of the people that they are serving and the paramedics are treating. So due to the staffing shortage, I had to make a change. So the immediate action was to brown out rescue ambulance sixty-three. By doing this, basically what I've done is I've removed two people from duty every day of the week, every day of the month, which represents sixty shifts at the end of... sixty forced shifts at the end of the month. So this takes that burden of being forced to work sixty times off of our personnel, gives them a chance to recuperate and get back to work in a healthy environment. When I was looking at what resources this would affect in the city and how I could have the least amount of impact on the city, we did some statistical analysis of our responses during 2019. The data showed us that by browning out rescue ambulance sixty-three, it would impact approximately one call per day, less than one call per day. And ultimately, in patients that are transported to the hospital from that area around fire station sixty-three, would impact less than one patient per week. So clearly, within our city, that was the area that would be least impacted by browning out that one unit. So I'm not going to brown out a unit without putting some mitigation in place to try and limit the effects of the action that I've taken. So first, I want to provide a definition to everybody. When we talk about an ALS transport, it's advanced life support. That's when the paramedics, fire engine and the paramedics show up to your house, they treat the patient, and the paramedics go with the patient to the hospital. Those are typically your cardiac patients, your respiratory patients, your acute trauma patients, folks that need paramedics by their side from the time of the injury until the time they get next to that doctor. A BLS response or basic life support are the folks that we go out on a call, and it's the less emergent ones. The fireman or the paramedics can stabilize the patient, and they can be sent to the hospital in an ambulance, but without the paramedic escorting them. So I haven't given that definition. The mitigation actions we put in place, we have one rescue ambulance remaining in the city, rescue ambulance sixty-one. Our typical call within our city would get an engine company and a rescue ambulance. The mitigation I put in place was to work out an agreement with care ambulances to send a BLS ambulance to every one of our incidents. So if we end up on a dispatch, we have a rescue company, RA sixty-one, and a BLS ambulance. Once the units get on scene, they'll do an assessment of the patient. If it's going to be an ALS transport, we can cancel the care ambulance because we're not going to need them. If we believe it's going to be a BLS patient, rescue ambulance sixty-one can go available as soon as practical, so that they're available for the next call. That's pretty much the role that rescue ambulance sixty-three has played in the city over the last few years, is covering behind rescue ambulance sixty-one because of their commitment time on ALS calls, mainly their commitment time on follow-up to the hospital on these BLS calls, and then being at the hospital, trying to go available because they can't offload their patient because of capacity issues at local hospitals. By taking rescue ambulance sixty-one out of that arena of transporting BLS patients, it frees them up to cover the second call. So that deals with our EMS issues. On the fire side, when we get a fire response in the city, we respond all our resources that are staffed and available at the time. Any given day, that used to be nine personnel. With a brownout of rescue ambulance sixty-three, unfortunately, we're down to seven personnel in a full response in the city. So we're leaning on Los Angeles County Fire Department a little bit heavier than we have in the past. I have had direct conversations with them, I have conversations with them, they understand the situation we're dealing with, and they're willing to help, but we can't abuse that relationship with Los Angeles County Fire Department. I'm quoting that. So the next obvious question is, when are we going to get rescue ambulance sixty-three back in service? It's not... The station's not closed, it's browned out. So our ongoing recruitment efforts, we currently have three individuals going through the hiring process right now. We anticipate them being ready to start our two-week orientation academy, March second is our target date. That's the Fortune Day Academy. We also have seven additional candidates, potential hires, that we'll be interviewing on the twenty-third of January, in just two days. Unfortunately, our history tells us that even interviewing seven candidates, we'll be lucky to get two or three out of that. But still, we know we've got three that are going through the hiring process now. Most importantly to us is to get our injured and ill employees that are off duty right now, those four individuals, back to work healthy as fast as we can. If we're trying to forecast when all this is going to fall in place and we can open rescue ambulance sixty-three back up, my goal is to make sure that we've got fully staffed, back in service twenty-four seven, by the completion of the Orientation Academy, which will start on March second. That's our goal. That doesn't mean it's going to be closed every day between now and then. What we're asking you guys to do, and the community to be patient with us, as we get our workforce back up to speed, as we get them back to work, we're going to start... We still have vacancies, even with these six spots that we're no longer staffing. Once we can get the workforce healthy, back to work, and available, when we've got a day where we've got two paramedics that we can put up at station sixty-three and open the RA back up, we're going to do it. That's our intention. The next question to me, when's that going to happen? I don't know. It could be next week, it could be two weeks from now, it could be day after tomorrow. I don't know. We have to be proactive to it because the service model we have in place right now, we're relying on care ambulance, and we're relying on Los Angeles County Fire Department to help back us up. So it's not something that we're going to do tomorrow morning. We have to forecast that. My direction to my battalion chiefs are to evaluate the available workforce, and seventy-two hours in advance, identify when we're going to open it back up. So we'll know in advance when it's going to be open. In summary, the decision to brown out rescue ambulance sixty-three was not made easily. I understand it potentially had a profound impact on emergency services in the city. It was the best of the bad options that we had, but I can tell you that with the mitigation we've put in place by utilizing care ambulances, what we've seen over the past four days, which belong on holiday weekend, there were no calls for services, no reading dispatches, fire station three's first in. And with that, I can tell you that throughout our entire city, there were no calls that had a delayed dispatch or that had a resource that must respond to it. So we met our goal one hundred percent of the time with the reduced resources we had in place. With that, I appreciate the support and the understanding to help us get through this difficult staffing situation we have right now. Do you guys have any questions? Would you like to answer?
Yeah, I do. Thank you very much for clarifying closed versus browned out. I appreciate that because there wasn't reported that on the media and the website. My question to you is, I'm very passionate about that area. We live right there on Shimeron in that HLA. There's three hundred and fifty-seven homes in our association that surround that fire station, even on the west side of Esperanza. Those are part of our association. When that was considered being built, we were very actively involved in pushing the residents to support it and understand the need. And so everybody up there is really passionate about that. Friday, after it was posted on the firefighter's website, I started getting emails. I'm the president of the Association, I started getting emails from residents in my board, you know, what's happening, why is this closed? So I had to put out a statement on my Facebook account, I don't do Nextdoor, and I just wanted people to understand. You and I met, and we talked about this, you knew how I felt, and I understood, because something you didn't say here is that I put out there is that, looking at the three stations, maybe you did, the three stations that one, number three, is the least impacted, the other two are major. The concern I heard all week long from the residents is the response time. What will it be? Even though it's not used a lot, the response time is scary. We had two lives saved up there. Might not sound like a lot over the last years, but two lives saved, you know, to that family member, it's a lot. What now? Have you looked into the response times between station two, have they had to come from one? Coming up Esperanza's not easy.
Thank you. I would agree with you one hundred percent. Two lives is a lot, but one life's a lot. Our hope is that we have no loss of lives, certainly, no extended EDA in patient care or to respond to a fire. As I said, that the location of fire station two on Wheeler, you know, is basically across the canyon from fire station three. So there's going to be a delay in response, and we're going to get it. They've got to get up and around. Rescue ambulance sixty-one, if it's available, they're going to be the first in to paramedic to go and get air. If they're not, we're waiting for mutual aid from another organization. I'm not going to tell you we're not going to have increased response times. It depends on what resources are committed at the time, which is no different than it was a week ago or two weeks ago. The reality is now we're a little more vulnerable than we were a week ago. I don't have a time for you. I apologize, but I have to say it's a two-minute response time for station two to get around fire station sixty-three. I don't know those numbers.
Well, I appreciate you working hard to try to get this back open, and the sooner the better. Thank you.
I agree.
Thank you, I appreciate that. That's... I've also received emails, and it's very disturbing to people that we browned out a station, and the response for the people in North Laverne, or all the people in Laverne, if you're here or there, you just don't have that third wheel. One of my biggest concerns is that now that we've browned out the station and you have the two people down, and you're able to do the sixty-four shifts, sixty-four shifts, my concern is with the employees that are working right now and still working in overtime, is the health of those employees because of the fact that they're doing, still doing overtime to cover the shifts. And you still have the five that are gone, four that are out, and you have three in background, you have seven additional that are looking at. My biggest concern is if someone else leaves the department for another agency, which, if anybody doesn't know, LA County, LA City has a vacuum right now because of the fact that they had a lot of retirees, so they're pulling from every community, not just ours. So it's a big issue. We need to really be concerned about that. Because they can do a lateral move to another agency and a bump up in pay, too. So it's very serious. And my biggest concern, though, is first the safety. And I know everybody's watching it, and I'm sure you're watching as you came on. What do we intend to do to make sure that these people don't get injured?
Well, under full disclosure, we're dealing with a background investigation of one of our employees that we know is going to another agency. So the attrition issues that we've had over the past year are just going to be in front of us for a while. We still have to deal with that. And if we hired the seven that we're looking at and the three in background, that'd give us ten. We don't have that many openings, but I'd take them right now because I feel very confident that we're going to need one more within the next six months. So we... You know, well, before I got here, this agency's been dealing with recruitment and retention issues. Those are in the foreseeable future. As far as the health of our firefighters and fire station, I believe that the mitigation efforts we took are going to have a profound effect on their ability to recuperate and regenerate and get back to full strength, full personal strength. And once that happens, we start getting the agency back to full strength. We're monitoring on a daily basis. Like I said, that ability to open rescue ambulance sixty-three is directly related to their ability to be healthy and get back to work. If they're not healthy and they can't work on a regular basis, we're not going to start staffing that unit. We're going to hydrate this to the ability of our workforce, a healthy workforce.
In your estimation, too, the ambulance services that we're going to use and also county, I know that we're not hired, we don't have a contract with county, it's just a mutual aid agreement that they will assist us if there's an issue, correct? I know the fire part of it.
It's partially correct. There are districts around the city where we have what we call an automatic gate agreement, where we have a written agreement with Los Angeles County that if there's an incident in those districts, we would go and provide resources. Typically, it's an RA that would respond out of the city. And then it's the top of the community up near Marshall Canyon. And I can tell you that over the past four days, RA sixty-one left our city, even though we're down one RA, left our city on three different occasions. But on two different occasions, rescue from Los Angeles County came in. That's the automatic gate agreement that we have in place. Let me, for clarification, if they responded to those specific districts where you have an automatic gate agreement, and I don't know that they did, probably did, then that's part of automatic aid. And that means that they call, we have an obligation to go. Mutual aid means if we call you, we don't have a contract in place that says you're going to provide these specific resources, mutual aid, we call them and we ask for resources. And they, if they're available, they will send them. They've been an excellent partner. They've stepped up for us whenever we needed them, as we've been an excellent partner with them. We just can't abuse that relationship.
Well, I appreciate your candidness, and it's very important to the residents, understanding what's going on, but it is a serious situation. And, uh, we hope that the new hires come in and come in quickly and don't leave. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I have a question. We have a mutual agreement with Pabina for dispatch, our communication officers, that because we have the same equipment, they can help us and we can help them. Is there any chance of getting this kind of a situation where we can bring in firefighters from a different agency to fill the gap until we get those three, et cetera?
Every day of the year throughout California, we help each other with mutually resources. Sometimes it's to go to a fire in their first end, sometimes it's to go to their city and cover it. In a previous life of mine, in years past, we had a strike team or five engines from San Francisco down covering the South Black Valley of Orange County. That's not uncommon to bring them down and cover because you have a resource need. That is purely in an emergency situation, and we do that fluidly throughout, throughout the state. There's no, there's no assistance for hire that you're going to pay to just come staff because you have a staffing issue. I can absolutely tell you that the issues that we're having, or agencies all over Southern California are having. I just, uh, spent the weekend with a fire chief from Corona. They've got seven fire stations, and he's down 11 firefighter paramedics. And while we were together for the weekend, he looked at his phone, he says, now I'm down 12. It's a, it's an issue for the smaller agencies throughout the state, throughout Southern California. I can speak for that.
Thank you. Anything else? Any questions? Thank you, Chief. Very, very much. Okay, at this time, we are, um, we'll go to public comment, and this is kind of aside on an item that is not on the agenda. Um, if you would like to speak, I have some speaker cards. There are blue speaker cards at, um, the podium, so if you will fill one of those off prior to speaking or after you speak, you can give it to our city clerk. The first person up is David McElway.
Oh, right. Good evening, Mayor Kendrick, members of the city council. My name is David McElway, and I live at 2525 D Street, right down the street. Been a happy resident here for 25 years now. And I am here to share with you and with my neighbors and fellow citizens, my strong support for Measure LV, which will finally address the ongoing fiscal crisis and the growing fiscal crisis faced by, by this city in order to fund its badly needed public services of all sorts. Not only police and fire, public safety, parks and recreation, city planning, public works, and all the other vital resources that we need to be, to have a high quality of life here in the city of Laverne. And we have enjoyed that high quality of life because we have excellent, excellent city services, and as they say, there's no free lunch. Things have got to be paid for. And, uh, I've seen so many posts on Nextdoor where people talk about they, and by they, they mean you, um, taking money from taxpayers in order to fund this measure. And I keep on responding to them that they is us. Back in 1776, we addressed the, the issue of taxation without representation. We, uh, tax ourselves voluntarily, we vote in elections, and then we vote for leaders who can wisely and hopefully proficiently and efficiently allocate those resources. And I, I have trust in our leadership. I have trust in our, our professional city staff. And I hope that members of the community join me in getting out in March and voting in favor, yes, on Measure LV. Thank you.
Actually, you can start voting 11 days before March 3rd, whatever date that is, with the election opening 11 days before, so it's February something.
February 22nd.
February 22nd for our city clerk, who's in charge of our election. Okay, now we'll go to Krista Chachmak. Krista?
Good evening, uh, city council members and mayor. My name is Krista Chachmak, and I'm a longtime Laverne resident. I know that if we don't secure additional revenue, the city of Laverne may be forced to reduce essential city services. Securing the three-quarter of a percent sales tax is a positive way for our city to keep our current level of service and allow visitors and patrons to contribute to this beautiful, special, and unique city that I love so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Krista. Thank you for waiting to deliver that.
I couldn't agree with those two people less. I think they're way off base. I also, I wasn't finding it speaking tonight, but when I find out that you're going to close a fire station for six weeks or seven weeks before the election, that kind of screams of dirty politics to me. It kind of, uh, kind of says to me that, uh, most of the people up here have already made up their mind, uh, so I'm very opposed to the sales tax. In a minute, I'm going to give you three reasons that you probably haven't heard of of why I'm opposed. But before I give those three reasons, I want to say that, first of all, my new first background, I'm a 42-year resident in Laverne. Uh, I'm late because I was coaching a basketball game. I'm a volunteer basketball coach for Benita High School. I have been for 18 years.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm past president of the Laverne Lasers. I was on the U Sports Council. Okay, so I also am the guy that most of you see running every morning. I've been running for 42 years. I've run over 60,000 miles in Laverne, so a lot of you know me from then. Most of you don't know me because I'm wearing a hat, you know? Uh, so I've been in every street in Laverne except for the streets on north of Weaver. Okay? So most of the citizens of Laverne that I've talked to feel that the retirement benefits are not a part of public safety. And for some reason, you guys and a lot of people want to say that retirement benefits are part of public safety. Retirement benefits are a separate liability item on a balance sheet. They have nothing to do with public safety. Once you're retired, you're retired. It's not a part of public safety, and you can't lump in trying to sell the sales tax by saying it's a part of public safety. So I'm way opposed to that. Also, I'll tell you just by the way that last month, I talked to 50 people coming out of bonds and State of Brothers, and I asked them to name me two policemen. Zero. Only three out of 50 could even name me one. So I'm kind of, I don't think there's this close relationship to the police department or there seems to think there is. But, okay. Before I get to my three reasons, I have one more thing. How are you going to sell the sales tax to the people in the mobile home park? There's $3.1 million that you want. Probably a hundred thousand of that is income that you're taking away from the mobile home residents. They're not going to have less money for food and medicine because you're imposing an additional tax on them. You're taking away their income. And yet, so I don't want people to say, well, I'm privileged and following mobile home parks that, hey, let's pass a sales tax. That's spendable income that you're taking away from. Okay? All right. So now the three reasons. I'm going to guarantee you that you haven't heard of these before, okay? Number one, I'm going to call this one Sleep at the Weed. Economists, I was an economist, actuaries, city planners, have known for 30 or 40 years that you have to have a sustainable retirement program. I knew 30 years ago that a sustainable retirement program was something like a rule of 95, 95/60. When you're years of service and your age up to 95, you should retire at 60% of your salary. When you retire, you should have paid off your mortgage, your kids are gone, you're not paying tuition, you don't need all that income. Okay? That is a, that is a sustainable retirement program. Now, that was 30 years ago. Now the rule is, um, we've probably been 101, 55, because people live longer. You can't have people on retirement longer than they work. It doesn't work that way. It's not sustainable. And that's where this, most of the sales tax is going to go. You may not say that, but that's what's going to go. Okay. Just along that line too, financial policemen are public servants, right? They're our public servants. As public servants, they should not have a retirement program that is better than what most of the people in Laverne have. They shouldn't. They should have, they, a retirement program, a city retirement program should mirror what the retirement people in this city have. Okay? You can't have a retirement program that's not sustainable. Okay, that's one. All right? I hope, I hope you agree a little bit about what I'm saying. Okay. Number two. Number two, my grandfather owned a clothing store in San Diego, a long-going company. The sales tax is 3% or 3.5%, okay? So what has happened is every 10 years, the sales tax is being increased by 1%, okay? So what we're going to have now, when, in 40 years, when Don Kendrick III is the mayor of Laverne, we're, he's going to be saying, we need a 15% sales tax.
And I don't have a son.
But you have, if you extrapolate it, it's going to be a 15% sales tax in 15 years that you guys are going to be up here trying to push on the citizens of Laverne. Okay? It's not sustainable, again. You can't just keep doing that. Okay, this is the most important. And this one, I hope most of you understand. One of my heroes is Milton Friedman, Nobel Prize-winning economist from the University of Chicago and Stanford Institute, a brilliant guy. Okay? What he says is that whenever you raise the price of, let's say, a car, 6% or 7%, you have to, you have to convince the consumers that there's value in doing that. It's the same with the sales tax. If you're going to raise the sales tax 6% or 7%, you have to convince these people that there's value in that sales tax. I offer you that there's little to no value. If you're giving that to bolster retirement benefits, unless the people that have retired are living in Laverne and spending all that money in Laverne, there's no value. Okay? If you bought, if you were to take this $3.1 million and you were to do a capital improvement, then I would say there's value because you're helping the economy, you're hiring people. But what you're doing now with this sales tax is of no value. Okay? All right. So those are my three reasons. If you, if you even think that I'm a little bit right, then I think you ought to vote against it. Okay? So now I'm going to get a little bit personal. That's okay. I have to hold, you've been a council member for, I think, 14 years, mayor for eight, Mr. Rosi and his predecessor, Mr. Lamalle. I, you're the captains of the ship. I can't hold you two responsible for letting this situation occur. I mean, I have to hold somebody accountable. You're the guy steering the ship. How do you let this happen year after year after year without some kind of reform that makes sense? It just, it doesn't make any sense to you. Okay? So I know my questions are rhetorical, uh, but I probably will go to one of Mayor Kendrick's public forums, and I'll ask him these same questions, not rhetorically, I'll ask him to answer, but I, I will tell you that Mr. Kendrick's a pretty smart guy, but I'm not a pretty smart guy myself. This room is full of pretty smart people, okay? And I think I'll be able to rebut anything that he says. So I hope he doesn't, he probably ought to ignore me if I show up at his meeting.
We'll have a wonderful conversation, Bruce.
Okay. All right, so I'm done. That's why I'm against it. Uh, I don't think you've heard those three reasons before. I could probably tell you a whole bunch of more reasons too, but, okay. Good night.
Bruce, I'm not sure what Measure LV is going to be, but please keep coaching kids. Thank you very much.
And I'm here tonight to talk about actually something that is occurring in the city of Pomona, is the cannabis overlay hearing that they helped. That's in October, so I'm a little late getting here. Uh, I received a letter from the city saying that they were going to go ahead and have this, uh, I guess new law, they're going to issue eight licenses, some of them being for actual manufacturing of marijuana, I'll call it marijuana, marijuana products. And that my home was in about 400 feet of a possible place, because I live, if you don't know where Brandt is, I live on Fulton, right across from Pomona, in a whole big industrial park. So, um, people were walking around the neighborhood trying to get a couple of us to go to this meeting, and I didn't think anything of it until I got this letter, of course. But the information that was going on in the neighborhood was that our city council, our mayor, and our city manager were doing the issue. So before I went to this meeting, I happened to run into Bob at an event, and I asked him about it. He kind of told me what was going on, filled me in, gave me some, some better information. And I did understand that things had been done from the city council, at least from the mayor and, and Bob's office. Uh, so I went in with a little bit more information. So when I showed up for the meeting, importantly for me, sitting there, I was a little bit early sitting here, was the police chief of Pomona. So I went up and I introduced myself, and I talked to him about this a little bit because my opinion is, we lived in our home on that street, on Brandt, for 25 years. And we raised five kids there. Most of them have gone through Benita. We have some special needs kids that have gone to other schools. Uh, my wife's family's been in San Dimas for a month longer than that, and they had kids go through, uh, Benita. So we have pretty heavy roots here. And having that home for that many years, that's interesting, okay? Also, our street's always been very safe. We've never really had any industry, any issues with that. My reason for going that night was to talk about the fact that if they were going to put something like that next to our neighborhood, that it would cause a few issues. Number one would definitely be a safety issue. There could be other people coming through the neighborhood, possibly stealing, doing whatever. Uh, and the other thing, if the secondary part, because safety is the first thing, but the secondary part was property rights. What's going to happen to the investment that my wife and I had in this, that's our nest egg, that's our property. Laverne is the city. I mean, I, everybody that spoke here tonight talks about the reason why we were here in Laverne. We all know why we're here in Laverne. So when I got a chance to speak with, in front of the city council, I tasked them with, should this happen, uh, I would think it would be up to the city of Pomona and the city of Laverne to get together and figure out a way that maybe they could help police our neighborhood a little bit better. Uh, and the police chief actually agreed with me prior to my comments. But I do want to thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and Bob. It was said in that meeting that the city of Laverne, the mayor had written a letter and actually been in contact, and there'd been a lot of talk, well, back and forth about how this was going to work with, uh, being a good neighbor to each other. So my reason for being here tonight is to thank you for that. I don't know how aware everybody is of that because I don't know how this affects everybody. But they did extend the night, that night, they extended it from 400 feet to 600 feet. And I know you guys originally asked for 1,000 feet, so there was a little bit of compromise. little bit of compromise. Also, I've been informed from the mayor that there may be some things coming up in November which may, make all of this known, whether it does or not, I don't know, but I'm here tonight, too, to also task you guys, should there be something going in close to our neighborhood that you do get together with the city of Pomona, and come up with some way to protect us. The one thing about the people that were talking about actually putting a retail or something like that, and they were talking about all this security that they have and all of that, unfortunately, I was the second one to speak, before all these people. The one thing I never heard that night was, well, yeah, you can have security for your retail outlet, but where is the security going to be for my neighborhood? They're not going to provide that. So we're going to have to depend on you. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, John.
Hope you're not staying overnight.
It's a little cold in here. Mr. Mayor and city council members, I'm Tom Darby, and I live at forty-one thirty Bradford Street. I recently learned that my neighbor Doug Kirk, or Kurt Gregor, has expressed a grievance to the city concerning his belief that I'm responsible for the death of his dog. I feel that I'm forced to respond to this claim and make it part of the public record as actions against me, my family, and my household. Our shared wall was down for repair in July of two thousand and fourteen. There was a brief minor incident between his dog and one of my dogs. After the incident, his dog looked fine, but to make sure, I offered to take his dog to the vet and pay for the visit. Lokey and Lisa, his girlfriend and owner of the household, said that the dog was okay, declined my offer, and said it was no big deal. Approximately two years, four months later, his dog passed away. Eight months later from that, or thirty-six months after the original incident, at a neighbor's birthday party, Doug informed me that I was responsible for his dog's death. After his claim, Doug engaged me, our babysitters, friends, and neighbors, on how I was responsible for the death of his dog. He gave our dog walker photos to give to me along with a message to tell Tom he owes me for the dog. He mentioned to the neighbor, to a neighbor, the amount owed was five thousand bucks. He spoke to me of how I could afford it. He threatened to call my employer to inform them of my bad character. He threatened to have the Inland Valley Means to Say come and take my dogs away. He mentioned a petition he had circulated with over two hundred signatures throughout the neighborhood, backing his claim against me. When the existence of the petition was verified, minus the number of signatures, I sent Doug a cease and desist letter from my lawyer in hopes of getting this harassing behavior to stop. The letter in part asked him not to speak to us for any reason. The letter also asked Lisa to communicate for nearby matters. Lisa was present during some of the conversation and is well aware of his actions. The request did not deter Doug from his behavior, in fact, it escalated. Our driveways are next to each other, and he has placed photos in his van window, photos and signs on the side of his house, in the windows of his house, and photos hanging from bushes as we walk past the sidewalk, so they'd be clearly visible. There's a motorcycle helmet with goggles mounted on top of the ladder looking over the fence, as if it's keeping an eye on us. A spotlight shining on the photo, signs, and helmet keeps them visible throughout the night. Sometimes he guns engines in his backyard, day or night, causing exhaust to pill our backyard. The spotlight that covers his backyard shines in our backyard on many nights. He has kept his radio on in the backyard loudly at night, and he has spoken to me as I walk past his property about his claim. He has spoken to my wife, and she is alone with the kids in the stroller, about how we better replace his dog. These actions have caused my wife to be afraid of him. She now crosses the street to pass his property as she sees him. We feel constantly harassed by his actions. Doug has come to the city to ask for mediation, learning of this request to the city. And what I deem as false and misleading information is what in part brings me here tonight. I welcome the opportunity to mediate with Doug and Lisa. Any action that can help mitigate this situation is appreciated. Thank you for your time.
I just wanted to, there seems to be something that can be done.
We're having a conversation, Tom, as well as trying to put something together with his name.
Okay, great, okay, good. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much.
Elaine Garcia?
Yeah, I got a question.
I'm sorry?
There's a few of us together about the same issue.
You want to come up and talk?
Yes, I want to.
Is?
It's about the same issue.
Okay, now, what's your name?
I'm Tom Okitis. Hi, I'm Tom Okitis. I live on six four nine seven Country Club Drive. I've lived there for four years. I'm the original owner of the home. I come before the council mayor to ask for help concerning the code enforcement violation of my home. I sent flyers out to each of you, both by email and I would send my lead and my wife brought to the city council on the sixth. Have any of you guys received the packets?
Would you tell us what it's about, please?
It's consuming air conditioner, issue with my neighbor. Back in August, I and at least three of our neighbors received a letter from the police department that complained they had enlarged against the location of the air conditioning unit at the side of our house. This unit has been in place for twenty years. My neighbors for sixteen years, my other neighbor for fifteen years, and eight years, respectively. In fact, they cannot be seen from the street, the various property, or from Google Earth. I am a forty-year resident of the city of Laverne, original homeowner of this tract and adjacent to the eighteenth freeway of the Seattle-Laverne drive course. My neighbors have lived in Laverne for fifty years and nine years, respectively. In fact, Mayor Kendrick sold my neighbor across the street his home with the air conditioner located in that same spot in his yard on the side yard. The code section eighteen dash ten one twenty seven, Eric Scherer is attempting to apply, and this situation is simply incorrect. The code does not specifically apply to mechanical equipment, such as air conditioning units located at the side of the house. The air conditioning units in question meet or exceed all requirements for access, light, air, and ventilation as they now stand, and are entirely consistent with current code. The code applies to architectural projections or an architectural element, neither of which an air conditioner is. Furthermore, Eric Scherer's behavior has been abusive, illegitimate, and immoral. We secured a meeting with Mr. Scherer on September tenth, the three homeowners, as well as myself, and he was hostile and taignistic and abusive. So much for working with us. He had an agenda for the meeting, namely, to intimidate and threaten us. Indeed, when the code deficiencies were pointed out by my neighbors, the Lingard, Charles Mercia, who are also city planners with a combined fifty-two years of experience between them, he became visibly agitated, threatened to fine us all on a daily basis of two hundred dollars, and abruptly left the room. I would request that this letter would also serve as a formal complaint against Eric Scherer, whose behavior was outrageous and unprofessional. Mr. Scherer has a professional, as well as a moral duty, to outline any administrative remedies as per the zoning code, but his attitude and actions have shown he is clearly incapable of doing so. When we made further inquiries about an administrative hearing, he was unaware of how this might even operate, or who a hearing officer even was. We were told that we would have to look it up ourselves. Indeed, the harassment has been ongoing with Candace Bocag, Eric Scherer, and Jim Crook, calling my wife and me at my hospital at least twenty times. The constant stress due to this ongoing harassment has adversely affected the health of my wife and myself. My neighbors, who also received letters, are all appalled at the events that have unfolded. On December twenty-third, a uniformed Laverne police officer was sent to give me yet another citation after I had filed an appeal per the city code. On December thirteenth, I filed an appeal at the police department, which was then abruptly lost. After two citations, now it's up to a thousand dollars for my air conditioner location, which has been there for twenty years, I'm again being threatened with more fines. This is clear mismanagement and even abuse of city resources and taxpayer money. This could have, in the true spirit of working with us as good neighbors and longtime residents, been so easily resolved with a simple and quick code addendum, adding a definition of mechanical equipment or architectural projections or elements, as other cities have done. However, this is not the route that Eric Scherer has chosen. Instead, he wastes city resources to act on behalf of completely baseless complaints originating from an absentee landlord who does not even live in the neighborhood. I've been given various stories from city staff about what this landlord has intended, none of which have turned out to be true. Building a wall, not building a wall, that the location of the air conditioning unit is limiting the use of their property. When the police officer came out last, he said that my air conditioner was actually on my neighbor's property. Well, that wooden fence that's been there for forty years, that same wooden fence is actually a foot and a half on my property. This is simply not true. A recent property survey reveals a side property fence to be wholly on my property. Location of the side fence is not indicative of the legitimacy of the line. Therefore, this situation is now a civil matter between two homeowners, not the business of the city. Indeed, Eric Scherer, with his illegitimate and questionable interpretation of the city code, threw a hand grenade into our neighborhood and upset many of our wonderful neighbors. Mr. Scherer, this is how we've always done it, explanation is simply not valid, which caused me to seek clarification from a land use attorney, and you should have a copy of the land use attorney that defines about the air conditioner. Here is what I'm requesting the city council to act upon. The direct staff to cease fining me for illegitimate interpretation of the zoning code. The direct staff to appropriately amend the existing code and allow for the issue of a building permit to the current air conditioning location. I thank you so much for your attention to this matter. Some of you here on the council I talked to by phone, or personally have phoned, and I'd like to try to really work this out. I have left my phone number with the people who are renting the home next to me, for the lady who owns it, the one who just moved in, or she inherited the home a possible year ago. I have no idea what her intentions are with doing this. The air conditioner's been there twenty years, my neighbors have their air conditioners in the same spot, and I could get any citations, and that's where we're at.
Thank you. Elaine?
Almost.
Pardon?
My name is Elaine Garcia.
Elaine, Elaine.
Elaine, combination of Ella and Elaine.
Nice, good.
I've lived in Laverne, I live on Country Club, house is down. I'm one of the targeted homeowners, along with Dr. Lee and Dr. Tom, of course, and Linda Gorgis, who's not here. First of all, I'd like to ask, what happened to the compilation packet that we delivered on January seventh? We delivered it to the administration desk and asked that they were to be delivered to each council member's mailbox. They were not. I understand now that Deborah gave it to the city manager, they were not addressed to the city manager, they were addressed to you, which is why Mrs. Okitis has handed you basically what the packets are. So I have a question about what happened to those. Where did you go?
I'm waiting for you there.
Go ahead.
As was communicated to the council, that packet was passed on to Candace for to provide some staff input on the information. It was communicated to the council that it was received, but there needed to be some context put to several of the things that were asked for. That information has been passed on to council, as well as the lawyer.
I can't believe that you would be okay with somebody intercepting communications that were meant specifically for you and not addressed to anyone else.
Is there anything else?
Really? Well, you know, I've lived in Laverne for fifty years. My dad was on the planning mission, Garcia, I'm sure you know him. We are not here to argue, we're not here to be told exactly what we're supposed to do. Eric is not an oracle. Again, my husband and I have over fifty years of city planning experience. I worked for five different cities. My husband works for the city of Ontario currently. The issue at hand is a piece of mechanical equipment in each of our yards. They're not considered architectural projections or elements. A definition of an architectural projection, according to the city of Ontario, is a building feature that is mounted on or extends from the surface of the building wall or facade, typically above ground level. Examples of architectural projections include balconies, bay windows, lighting fixtures, marquises, canopies, and other similar projections of a building. This is not what Laverne code states. And, by the way, in telling you how long I've lived here, you know, my brother lives four blocks from me, he's a retired police chief from Azusa, another Bob Garcia. My mother, Mrs. O'Reilly, is here. I'm related to about twenty-five different people in this city, Andersons, the Garcias, the Merciers, the Griffiths, the Van Leets. We are not people that flout laws. In fact, we are people that you would be lucky to have as neighbors. My dad was also a member of the ownership fire department, starting in nineteen seventy-two. So, again, we have a deep attachment to the city, and we don't take kindly to be treated so rudely by city staff. Eric, when we secured that meeting, he was palpably hostile to us. Then he had a visit fit and flunked from the room. That is what we had to deal with. And currently, he is fining Dr. Tom a thousand dollars and sending a uniformed officer up to issue a citation? Who does that? What a waste of resources for your city. I've never encountered such a thing, I've never seen such rudeness, and if anyone who had worked for me had acted in such a way, they wouldn't be working for me anymore.
I'd like to clarify, a little comment time. The Brown Act, this allows the city council from dialogue with, so it's not that we don't want to, we're just prohibited from, and I'm sorry, that's the way the law works, but that's the way the law works in IPOs. And by the way, you had a great day, so I'll be good to you. We will try and get to the bottom of this.
We've been trying our hardest.
If I may, just for the sake of length of those, the information that was, the council has the rest of the information, I would ask you to go back and review it. This has not been a process that has not been communicated all the way through my office, and I have been a part of an attempt to gain compliance. So I'm not going to sit here and suggest that Eric Scherer is the one that has been handling it all the way through, it's also been me who was attempting to... with multiple conversations with Mr. Portmans. To no avail. I will attempt to continue to gain compliance, but we are unfortunately in a heads-and-side process at this point, after one or two times. Please review the information. If the council has any questions, please.
Thank you.
What's your name?
Hi, Qing Li.
No.
Do you know this one?
I got it.
I live on the Country Club, six one eight. And one of the neighbor got the same citation. And if I fill out a blue card, I think we put on the same one.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry, okay. In fact, in short, very short time, depending on how you count the streethouse, twenty to thirty percent of the same resident on the same street get the same citation. It's surprising. I don't know what consideration is. Second, do we have a law here to regulate this part? It's clearly the habit. We have this section for the setback law in the city multiple code. It's totally not less than that word. I think, if I understand correctly, that ordinance is established in nineteen ninety-seven. We use a special word here, architectural projection or architectural element here to regulate the city. And I hope the city staff have followed the law, not above, not below, just follow the law. And we use this word in nineteen ninety-seven with the master of reason. I didn't live in the city at that time. Most younger people may know the reason we use that. And we even use the word permanent projection there. And we have this situation here. And I didn't request anything. I just need the city staff to follow the law we have. If the law is not clear, let's make it clear. Definition, definition, definition. I think it took us for many times tonight with different considerations. If this architecture element or architecture projection is not clear, please make it clear for us. Thanks.
Thank you. Denise?
Hi. Ms. Candace. This whole ordeal has been really horrific. We've lived in our house since nineteen seventy-nine. We've never had any problems. We always have really nice neighbors. The house that's next to us now is rented. The person that owns the house obviously has something to do, our friendship or something with somebody here. And I'll tell you why. There's no reason why I have had to give her my phone number several times. The people next door are related to her. Okay? It's been clear harassment for you, Bob, to have Candace calling me constantly, 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 to the point where I had to tell her, quit calling me or harassing me. It's ugly. That shouldn't happen. And why? Do you know Lisa, the owner of the house? Who's pushing your buttons to keep pushing us and pushing us and pushing us too? Why? Why is it, when I brought these envelopes, the documentation, why is it that you ended up with them? I asked the lady right off.
Would you address your comments to the city council, please?
Well, because he was the one that ended up with all of the documents. Why? And then Candace is going, picking through it? Those documents were not meant for you. They were not meant for Candace. They were meant for the mayor and all the council people. Why? And then nobody knew where they were. Also, an email was sent. That was disappeared. What happened to the envelopes? That's why I gave these out to him. Where are the envelopes that were sent? You would know. You had them. They were given to you.
Would you please just address the city council? Any questions?
Oh, it's annoying because this is the way this thing has been going on the whole entire time. It's harassment. It is. There's no clarification in the code and you guys won't come down and say, yeah, we gotta redo the code. It's wrong. What do you have to say? I'm addressing you and no one's saying anything.
We can't. We're not allowed to.
Why are you not allowed to?
State law.
This is not an agenda item.
You mean it's not an agenda item?
It's not an agenda item for the council to take action. You're speaking under public comment. You're free to speak, but the council cannot address you and cannot decide this matter tonight. Put it on the agenda. Well, there is a...
Obviously, there's enough heat to put it on the agenda.
There's an appeal process for administrative citations and you can avail yourself of that.
Yeah, I did, and they lost.
No more.
Everything's been lost. Emails, papers, it's kind of odd.
Mesong, Mesao? Mesao?
Yes, sir, that's me.
I know it is.
Somebody lightened up the room a little bit. How's everybody doing tonight? Good evening, city council. Everybody, I wanted to juice myself to this amazing city. My name is Mesao Cash, Casha Felgita. I am running for US House, thirty-second district congress. I would say I wanted you to match the face to the name of my yard signs and banners having my shiny face all over. So at least you could see a live body here. And I just wanted to tell you something about myself. I started in the city. I was a police cadet in nineteen ninety-four. And I'm a great passionate about that. I love being in law enforcement for over twenty years. And I've seen some great things in the city. I love our firefighters. I love our law enforcement officers, our first responders in the city. And I would like you to please always consider promises made as promises kept. I understand somebody earlier said that we talked about their retirement. Law first responders don't get paid for what is going to happen, when it's going to happen. We have to take care of our firefighters. We have to take care of law enforcement officers. And we have to take care of our citizens, our amazing citizens that are sitting here today with all their issues. And I go to each city council and I hear all about the different issues in the cities. And they're generally all the same. They're passionate about issues. They're passionate about 5G. They're passionate about their firefighters, law enforcement officers, community events that happen. So I just encourage the city to continue that dialogue with the citizens. And of course, I want to juice myself against everybody that's watching, watching live. I probably lost about five pounds. They said I gained ten pounds with the TV. I've been working out. But I just want to juice myself for you guys. I'm just trying to get everybody to laugh. Everybody's so tense in here. I can't even feel like... Somebody said there was a dinosaur in the room. I think she was right. But I think everyone's just so passionate. And that's okay. That's what our veterans serve for. That's what we fought for. I'm still in the military. I'm a major in the US Army. I'm stationed in Los Alamos. I'm promoting lieutenant colonel hopefully sometime soon, depending on when Congress hurries up and starts promoting some folks. But this is me. And I appreciate it. I'll be around if anybody has any comments. City council has any comments? At least now you can see the actual person who's been running. Hopefully, we represent this city and then thirteen other amazing cities in this district.
Thank you, Cash.
God bless you.
And thanks for your service.
Thank you. Stay strong. Stay armstrong.
If you were in the Navy, you'd be better. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council on any other issue?
Oh, a card for your server for you. My name's Danny Montoya. Good evening, mayor and council. In May of twenty nineteen, the city and the firefighters union settled a five and a half million dollar federal and state lawsuit pertaining to First Amendment violation and invasion of privacy. I wish I was here to advise you that those incidents are in the past. Sadly, not. What we have in this city is a crisis of trust. The city has time and again violated the terms of the settlement agreement, from not purging files to insinuations and recommendations on promotions. They have also implemented their tactics of illegal orders again. After the lawsuit, I had an opportunity to sit down with Councilwoman Carter and thought I'd... And though I believed this was a gesture of good faith on both sides, the joke was on me. At the conclusion of our meeting, Councilwoman Carter asked me, and I quote, "Can you and the association not get involved in the election? Because I am supporting Dawn and things will get ugly." I was completely...
You can't address it.
I was completely dumbfounded and asked her if she had read the lawsuit, to which she replied, "Some of it." I continue to advise that supporting a candidate is the only way we have a voice and it is illegal for her to ask such a request. It didn't stop there. She continued to ask multiple firefighters and association members the same question on multiple occasions. Fast forward to the week of January sixth, twenty twenty. Jim Murphy had a conversation with Fire Chief Leonard and during that conversation, threatened to quote-unquote "take out" Montoya, Bonanno, and Glaze. I am very aware of Mr. Murphy's affiliation with the ex-fire chief, Councilwoman Carter, and you, Mr. Mayor. Do you condone this threat or do you publicly disavow it? Fast forward to January thirteenth, twenty twenty. During staff meeting, the interim fire chief issues an order from the city manager directing him and other department heads to advise all members that they are not to attend any political forums on duty. They are also restricted from parking on city property if their vehicles display any type of support for a political candidate. We had a discussion as to the legality of such a request, to which the fire chief replied, "That is what the city manager told us at the advice of the city attorney." This was an illegal order. All three battalion chiefs agreed, and I stated it was an order I would not follow. Our fire chief responded to the city manager with our concerns. Finally, you decided to change your stance and are allowing employees to attend forums. But why did it have to come to this? Did you not learn anything from the past three years? I'm here to tell you, this isn't the kingdom of Don Kendrick and Bob Rusty. You don't make the laws, you follow them. As if this isn't enough, the city had to brown out a fire station and you blame everyone but yourselves. You post on social media, and I quote again, "We have to brown out Fire Station Three due to a shortage of firemen to operate the station. We have nine fire personnel out, five for injuries, four for sickness." Robin, that is completely false. We are short five physicians right now because they are vacant. We lost eight people, eight great people, period. They have gone to other departments. And we have four on injury, two firefighters and two engineers, with the five shortages totaling nine. We are constantly hiring and recruiting members. Our... I'm sorry. We are constantly hiring and our recruitment numbers are atrocious. Either you are blatantly lying to cover up your incompetence or you didn't read what the fire chief put out. The truth is the truth. We cannot attract new people nor retain people because of the environment you have created and the lack of comparable pay and benefits. This not only creates a disgruntled workforce, it creates an unsafe work environment. Per NFA seventeen-ten, we were supposed to have fifteen firefighters on structure fire. We are now down to nine, including the on-duty battalion chief. My question to you tonight is this. Are you proud of what you are doing to the city? Under your watch, you have settled a five and a half million dollar lawsuit for First Amendment violations and retaliation toward firefighters for supporting a candidate. You have settled lawsuits by members of the police department, temporarily closed a fire station, decreased pay and benefits towards your firefighters, paid the ex-fire chief greater than two hundred thousand dollars to go away, completely disregarded the opinions and beliefs of your constituents, and that isn't enough. You propose a tax increase to ten and a quarter percent, insinuating that it will go to police and fire, but won't identify how much. Then to top it off, you extend the contract to the city manager, who is directly to blame for a majority of these issues. You are the epitome of standard politicians. You cover for one another, bury your head in the sand. When things don't add up, you put a tax on the people and you wonder why the employees and citizens are arrayed. You should be ashamed of yourselves.
Is anybody else still would like to address? Wait, wait, just a minute.
I think we've all heard of deflection and I think we just heard deflection up here just a few minutes ago. I'd like to talk about the chief. For the first time in a long time, we've heard an honest, forthright, professional conduct by one of our firefighters coming up here. We didn't hear about guys getting up here and bad-mouthing, assassinating the character, the integrity and professionalism of a fellow firefighter, which... They read the Bill of Rights for the firefighters, which was put into law in two thousand and eight, which is the exact copy of the police officer's Bill of Rights. They violated Chief Chadkowski's Bill of Rights, under the firefighter's Bill of Rights. And not only did they just assassinate his character net, he knew what the due process was. He could not respond to it. He stood there and he took it. And when a guy stands there and takes it, what people keep pounding on him and pounding on him and assassinating his character in public, that's bullying. And I'll tell you, I think it's time that... We have a lot of firefighters here, nearly all of them. They go to the job and they're professional. They've been to my house. They take care of my wife. They took her to the hospital. But professionalism is not something you take off, put on a hanger at the end of your day, your tour of duty. It's something about not only what you do, it's how you do it, but it's also who you are. It's a core value in it. And it upsets me when a professional public safety officer gets up and it's all about him. It's all about him. Everybody else is to blame. Why are we losing these? Why did we lose five firefighters in two thousand and nineteen? Do we have a hostile working environment? I think we just had an indication we might. Thank you.
Would anyone else would like to?
I'm going to talk about the fire department also about four months ago. Excuse me, two months ago. I had a problem with my heart and decided not to do what I'm supposed to do. They come out to the house, took care of me. Four-minute response time, got me over to the hospital. I'm here now with a pacemaker. Those guys are great. They know what they're doing. Good job. If you want to save a lot of money on taxes, vote cover a loose amount of business.
Mr. Mayor, council, city staff. I don't know where Bruce went, but if you guys ever see him at Stater's, let him know. My name's Mark. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Mark Deterres and I am speaking as both a lifelong resident of Laverne and also as the president of the Laverne Police Officers Association. I am here to ask for your support of Measure LV. Our association and a dedicated group of community volunteers are working effortlessly to inform our community how critical this tax is to our community's safety and quality of life. to inform our community how critical this tax is to our community's safety and quality of life. I, like about a quarter of our patrol officers, grew up here in Laverne. I am a dedicated public servant who is proud to be able to give back and protect the city that raised me. Our department has fewer officers than when I was hired 16 years ago. With recent changes in state law, we are now fighting harder than ever to protect our citizens from an increasing threat with fewer resources. We have made concessions in our compensation and contracts in an effort to work within the means of the city. The city has asked us to do our part and we have. We are now asking the citizens to do their part. I ask you to stand in solidarity with your police officers and vote yes on Measure LV. Over the next few weeks, our association and other citizens will be walking door-to-door, asking for your support. We will be there to answer any questions or concerns you may have. If you see us, please stop and say hi. Also, if you'd like to join us or donate to our cause, you can go to our committee website at www securlaverne.com. I do realize there are many passionate issues to be debated within our city to include the future of our elected officials. However, one thing everyone standing in front of me here agrees on is voting yes on LV. Robin, Charlie, Muir, Don, Tim, we appreciate your support in voting yes on LV. Thank you for supporting the measure and thank you for your time.
A lot of passion in the room tonight. My name is Jeff Peterson. I'm a 58-year resident, third-year employee of the fire department. I'm here mainly to discuss the brownout, the close of Station 3. I built a home back in 1991, '92 and I paid $6,000 along with all my other permits to go to a fire facility fee to build a fire station. Been involved in this for a long time. I've had various talks with the prior or previous city manager regarding it. Call it whatever you want. Call it a brownout, call it a closeout. Bottom line is there are not firefighters there. There are no medics there. So we can euphemize the name a little bit, but there are no medics there, okay? Should we have firefighters there? We used to argue that. We lost that argument. Our firefighters were passionate about trying to get firefighters up there. We needed more firefighters to meet NFPA. That did not happen. We lost that battle. We got two paramedics up there. They didn't hire two additional at the time. They took them from Station 2. A reapportionment, if you will, okay? As I worked, I was involved in many of these issues. They weren't just about salary and retirement and benefits for firefighters. They were about issues that made us safer and a better department. Emergency medical dispatchers. We tried for that for a long time, 20, 30 years. It was always there. We tried to get staffing for our truck. Back in 1991, we developed a mellow roost with San Paulo Development and Coal Development. Collected millions of dollars in that fee. I'm not sure if current city managers are aware of that, but we collected a lot of money. Got a nice ladder truck, but we didn't get any bodies for it. Our ladder truck in town, ladies and gentlemen, is not staffed. It is not staffed. It has not ever been staffed. Nobody has a ladder truck that sits. Now, the only time it gets staffed is when we put bodies on it. If they're in quarters, they jump over to the truck. I think that's what they're doing still. But make no mistake, it has never been staffed. We have two fire engines that are staffed. You have to have a truck on structured fires. There are duties they can do that engine companies cannot do and you need those people there. So I sit here and listen to Station 3 being shut down. I have many discussions with the past chief, Row, the past city manager. And I also personally paid in, as I mentioned. But there were millions of dollars collected up there. And it seems like we're just kind of writing this thing off. Everybody's, you know, coming out with political answers saying, "Well, it's just a brownout. It's only for six weeks." When is this stuff going to stop? You talk about the frustration with these firefighters. This is what it's about. It's about legitimacy. It's not about salary. It's not about overtime. It's about legitimacy. That's all I ever wanted here. I would, you know, it's just so doggone frustrating to see people get up and miss the mark with this thing. This kind of stuff has been going on for a long time. It didn't just start with Mr. Hepburn. It's been going on for a long time. And it's time every one of you folks sitting up here gets a hold of this and fixes it quick. It's unacceptable. Thank you.
Does anybody else who would like to speak under public comment?
Do I look like a lunch bag still? All right, no lobs. It'll work. Good evening, everybody. Council, mayor, city staff, and most of all, my concerned citizens that are here behind me today. My comments are going to focus on the upcoming Measure LV. And unlike most things in politics today, this is a bipartisan issue. Here in Laverne, that translates to both Tim and Don are in favor of it. For my conservative friends in the room, the simplest argument in favor of this is it's focusing on keeping our tax salaries under local control. The measure creates a citizens oversight commission. I see much concern of the way this will be spent. And if you're concerned and you have a background in finance or accounting, there'll be an opportunity, just like the planning commission, for you to apply for this position and express those concerns in those directions. For myself, I got involved because I'm a public employee. And I know the concessions have been made within this room by all the city employees, especially public safety, I don't think are sustainable. I know they're not sustainable. Clearly, if we're losing that many firefighters, this is unsustainable. Is it completely due to compensation? No. There's been a lot of things going on and they've been misused and mistreated. And that's how I started coming to these meetings in the first place. But I see a lot of things online about what public employees get and how they're just looking out for a handout. They don't realize that all the city employees that aren't safety in town already work a reduced 36-hour work week. The city tries to pay immediate and hourly wage. That puts them about nine or 10% below the market average of all of our competitors around us. All new hire employees already contribute 12% of their own money towards this retirement that are in alignment with PEPRA, which all cities that are using PERS are with. Our city is not out of line, not lower, not higher. They're with all of our competitors that use PERS. This can compete with LA County, Orange County Fire, LAFD, the sheriffs, because they use different calculations. The city salaries were frozen from 2017 up until this month. We're a couple of years behind for our police department and a lot of our other city employees. Fire department has weathered big reductions in compensation. And the city of police, as it was addressed, now has 10 fewer people than they did over 10 years ago to address ever rising crime and criminals being released from jail earlier than ever. Now, we may not all agree how things should be spent. But my reason for being here is I believe we can't begin to fix the problems. Whoever you're going to vote for in this room or whoever's not in this room, you have to give them the tools to succeed. I was going to run for council, but I realized no one was taking this up. And the last thing I wanted to do was get elected as a public servant myself, holding the hatchet over my brothers and sisters that are looking out for this community. With that, stand with our police and our other city employees and myself and help us secure Laverne. Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the council? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, before you go on, just going back to the country club issue that I think need to be commented on. There was a conspiracy comment. We did not go looking for this issue of staff. It was brought to us by a resident that nobody knew, nobody knows. It's affecting their ability to enjoy their property. Our city attorney?
Just a minute.
Our city attorney, not Mr. Kras, but his associates worked at it and we are following the code that has been put together by council previously. We're trying to do this. So it is not something that staff is trying to harass about or do anything in that regard. And I feel like it must certainly offend them, but the mayor is just trying to uphold the codes that exist. We will continue to try and gain compliance the easiest way possible, but we will continue to do what we can.
It's not compliant. It's compliant, period.
Okay, let's move to item 10 under council comments and conferences. Jim, why don't you start?
Well, first of all, thank you all for coming. I know that sometimes these issues are colorful. But I want to thank Dan Keasy and his staff for Esperanza, the pathway for Esperanza. And we had a section by the nature park on Golden Hills that was just basically dirt. And one of the residents, Dan Spurling, had mentioned, "Hey, why can't we do this?" And I mentioned it to Dan and they talked. And lo and behold, a year later, we have a walkway that covers from the natural park all the way up to the new homes and then beyond around Esperanza, or cursed Esperanza, which protects people's lives because it was basically walking a street on a hill there. So thank you, city staff. It's just, it's amazing. It's really great. Thank you.
And it's safer.
So this is cold and flu season. And last week, I spent a week in bed with the flu. Fortunately, I'm over the flu. It only lasted five days for me since I had a flu shot. So I'm here to tell you, it's not too late. Go get your flu shot.
That's all the energy you have, huh? Charlie?
Okay, boy. I think I would learn, but this time I once again agreed to go to lunch with the fire department. All of us individually after the lawsuit agreed to meet with Mike Messina, the interim fire chief and the head of the association, which is Andy Glaze. We had lunch. We talked about how can we move this city forward. We talked about that. We worked on it. At that time, I worked, talked with Andy in front of those two gentlemen and we talked about what can we do? And he told me there's going to be a pancake for breakfast. We're doing a safety fair, you know. And I said, "I'd love to be a part of it." So with that, then shortly later, I saw Montoya downtown at one of our street fairs. And I asked him if we could, you know, if you'd like to meet for lunch. And so some time went by and then he called me and asked if we could meet. And, you know, I always let the city staff know what I'm doing because I'm going by myself. And I felt comfortable with that because I wanted to move the city forward. It was an effort. I just thought, you know, we've got to do something. And so I thought we had a good conversation about different things in the city. And we talked about, you know, going county, you know, what would that mean for our city? That was a big thing on his mind. He wanted to talk about. And so I listened. I thought the conversation went good. We had an hour of lunch. Then at the end, he said, "Do I have anything to ask?" And I said, "Yes." "I would like to ask that the fire department stays out of this city election." That's all I said. And so it was a conversation. I even asked that of Andy in front of the two gentlemen. It was that basic. And to be blown up like this, it just is not how we're going to move this city forward. Let's put this behind us. Let's move this city forward and work together. We're not going county right now. Let's work on this city.
Thank you, Robin.
I agree. And first of all, thank you, chief, for your comments on allowing us to learn exactly what's going on with our fire department, with the brownout, temporary closing of it and so forth. We need to get back to getting that station open, as you said, and we all know. And this is an issue for our residents and that's the most important people up there. You know, when I ran a business, I've been in the business world since I was a little boy working for my parents. And when I got to the point that I started having a company that I was running with over 50 employees, I was responsible for hiring, for recruiting, hiring, training, maintaining the staff. And I think that responsibility is in every one of our departments. And I don't know why that we have such a recruitment problem with fire when there's so many people out there that want to be firefighters. And I just would love to see everybody coming together to create the atmosphere that Laverne has enjoyed for over 100 years and will enjoy for the next 100 years if every one of us cares enough to make that happen. Okay, we will move.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a need for a closed session. It is under Government Code Section 54956 at 9, Subsects D1. And enlisted cases are there and conference with legal counsel.
We will assess to closed sessions. While they turn out of closed session, our next meeting is temporary. We're adjourned.